The tree go like that, you know, but I just haven't been in the right place to see.
Okay, it's four thirty. And this is the Barner County Planning Commission. We're located fifteen hundred highway two, San Point, Idaho. We're in the first floor conference room. Online Zoom teleconference and YouTube livestream. Being said, can I have the commissioner's roll call to my left? Okay, so let's stand up, we'll do pledge allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. There's one change in the agenda, Josh will be in the second. Item and then the review and the session will be in third on. And that's soon to change, all right. Are there any? Other announcements? And did everybody look at the minutes of the twenty first? So, buddy, okay with minute? So, uh, well done with that. So, being it's four thirty two, we have a guest tonight from Idaho Department of Fish and Game. Uh, can't read your last name, so go ahead and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about how you get to your position.
Oh, um, well, my name is Merritt Horstman, um, I'm the environmental staff biologist for Idaho Fish and Game. Basically, uh, my position, I, I review requests for comments from all five of the northern counties. Water resources, um, IDL, all, all those requests come through me. And I review those and then give recommendations on how to mitigate for fish and wildlife impacts. So, as you can imagine, it's been a busy year this year, so, um. I've been here for four years, Northern Idaho, I've been working with the fishing game for twenty, so. Uh, working central and southern Idaho.
Not really, so the commission can now have questions to know better. Based on all the comments that we have received from Idaho Fish and Game in the past two years, I guess. If they have some, you guys have some important questions like where are the critical wildlife habitat locations in Bonning County or? Important areas to conserve, so maybe Meredith can possibly answer those questions.
While that's coming up. One of the, the key things that we hear about, maybe your comments about, and there's lots of public comments about. Because it is included in the present conflict is critical habitat, right? So, and the charge from the public is, that's a study that was done, while, um. Everybody has wildlife in the neighborhoods, they don't live around there, who's possibly listed, so, right? It's certainly not static kind of thing anyway, but we're dealing with, or occurs to be a pretty old study, right? Take it from there. So, uh, to be perfectly honest, when I found out that you had a critical wildlife map. And when, uh, Milton sent it to me, I printed it out and I walked around the office and asked all of our biologists. Who made this? Where did it come from? Nobody had any idea. So, we've had quite a bit of turnover. But, um, my boss at the time, Chip Percy, um, he couldn't even recall. And he's been in the position for seventeen years, so. Nobody knew where that data came from, um, and how, how they got that data. Because we are starting to do some pretty intensive studies up here. Using GPS collars on animals to try to figure out where that habitat is. But where they had things arranged was kind of a mystery, so, um, that, that's where I'm at, on that, on that plan. Um, that being said, I've had a lot of discussions with our wildlife biologists about critical habitat within the region. And, um. When, when you talk about critical habitat, there's critical habitat for species that are, um. Just, just our, like our normal big game species, uh, and our biologists will tell you, um, that. Winter range because of the way that our wildlife moves in region one. Is anything below thirty-five hundred feet that has a south or southwest aspect can be considered winter, winter range. Now, are some south, southwest, west a- aspects more important than others? Obviously. But, um, we have some challenges in, in region one. To figure out, especially winter wildlife, because in the rest of the state, we put up helicopters in the winter. We fly around and we count stuff, um, it's really difficult with canopy up here. Uh, so, we don't have a lot of that data. Um, that being said, because of the cost and the dangers associated with flying. The department as a whole has gotten away from those, um, winter time comp counts. Now, we're gonna keep doing them, but we've gotten into more, um, camera trap studies. And GPS collar studies and. Right now, in reach, in unit one, which is anything north of the pondera system. Um, and kind of go, goes to the Clark force, so we're looking at this now. From here up. From here up in region one is where they're, they started their, not region one, but unit one. Is when they, they started what they call their E O E study or the ecology of everything. So they slap collars on deer, elk, moose, bears, wolves, lions. And they send them out and they see how everything interacts with each other. Um, they started that two years ago in the region, um, and we've already made some pretty interesting discoveries about. What, how, how much whitetail deer in the region move and mule deer, um. And elk and where they, where they winter, but they're, they're focusing on unit one and then to the south of us. In, in unit six first. Once they get those regions kind of figured out, then they'll go to the, some of the other units, but, um.
So, to clarify, is, is winter range critical habitat?
Winter range is critical habitat because of the fact that when you disturb wildlife on winter range. You can affect their survival, um, you won't see it during the winter, um, and it's one of the, the confusing things. About talking about winter range, you don't see that mortality in January, in February, in the deep snow. When you see it, when, or when you don't see it is in April, when they start to migrate back up into the hills. Um, they don't have the energy to go from a wintertime gut biome to a summertime gut biome. And you have that delayed mortality in April and May, and a lot, a lot of times you just don't see that. Because it's no longer out on those open faces, it started to kind of follow the green lines up, but they, they don't make it. So it's, it's, it's a delayed mortality, so we consider winter range, critical habitat. Because it needs to be, um, free of a lot of disturbance.
So when we consider the amount of state federal lands in Bonning County. How much winter range or critical habitat is there in those areas? How much is on private land?
A lot of the winter range is right on the, the interface and it's right about that level. Um, I guess one of the, the most critical, um, elk winter ranges is that hope face along highway two hundred there. Right at the private, um, forest interface. That, that is probably one of the most important places to elk in our entire region, um, where is it? Right here. Along that hope face, so we were, I just took place in some of the, uh, winter recreation or the, the winter recreation. Um, update that, that is going on right now, and that was a slot that we talked about. Because obviously you don't want snow machines driving all through there, but because it's private property, it's not really a big issue. Um, so we're, we're finding that this hope base here along here is very, very important for elk. You go up to Priest Lake. There's some pretty important, uh, deer on both sides of the lakes and deer wintering areas. But a lot of that area up there during the winter time, there's not much activity in.
But, so we, we send out notice or a file, whether it's, you know, a zone change or. Or there's, uh, minor subdivision or something's been on, and we get the cut and paste. These animals might eat your flowers, right? We're not responsible for your flowers, so. But you don't give us any, I mean, I just got more information in the last three minutes than we've gotten in any of those letters in the last two, three, four years. Which would really help inform the decisions that are being made about where houses are going, where people are going. But we're getting that information in these, missing that in those, you know, hey, heads up, here's what's going on, please do keep that.
Right, so for the most part, where things are being developed right now, think like the Hoover Valley. Um, it's flat, pretty nondescript, there's no wetlands, there's no waterways in those, in those areas. That is habitat, but it's not necessarily critical habitat of any kind. Um, so when we talk about those developments, are we worried about that habitat disappearing? Yes. Um, but is it, is it a critical habitat right now? No, but as it gets more developed in the county, those flat nondescript areas that. Have been changed from say twenty acre parcel, twenty acre parcels to five acres. It's becoming more and more critical because there's less and less of it, does that make sense? You know, and there's, we have, we have, um, animals that are large space animals. We have animals that are small, small space animals, so your, our elk and moose, bears, lions. They need large tracts of undeveloped land, now obviously we've gotten forests. But, um, where we're losing our habitat is kind of just this. Basic, it's basic habitat, it's flat, forested. But as that goes away, we're losing carrying capacity for, for some of those larger area animals. And it's, it's really hard to put into a, which I understand, right?
I, I can't, we could, we let that cat out of the bag and said, yep, change that zone, put those houses in there. Can't put that cat back in the bag, right? So you guys are gonna make some hard decisions and gather the information in those letters and inform us of this stuff like, hey, southwest facing. Winter time habitat, right, this will be important day, uh, we have, we've got to know that and. It's, I, I, you know, almost blown away that I didn't know that, had no idea, was unaware. But I've read those letters a thousand times, so, and I, and I, I get that. I also have to walk this fine, this fine line of. We, I cannot tell the county what to do, I can recommend things. But if I start telling or demanding things, I will get a topic too. Because that's not our, if we're not a permitting agency. So I am here to provide technical assistance and I, I see that I haven't been providing you enough technical assistance. Could I can maybe describe some of these things in more detail?
Certainly, and, and I, we're glad you're here to do that, right, sure. Yeah, and I, and I appreciate input, uh, on that, but going back to, uh, what Josh was talking about.
If, um, if for instance in the Hoover Valley, we get a letter from Fish and Game that says, you know, this over time will be critical habitat. I don't, I don't even make them, but if you say that's critical habitat, don't distinguish it between, you know, the winter range type of thing. Then, but we don't really have the information to go on, and, and then, you know, in the Priest Lake area. Uh, you'd identify there's some, uh, southwest slopes and stuff like that. But isn't that most of that either federal or state land?
A lot of it is, and that's, that's why I run into issues is, is, uh, there isn't a whole lot of development on what I would consider. Critical habitat right now, our biggest issue is, we have a lot, we, we, we kind of have. This, these forests, forested areas that are protected because they're public lands on either side, they're not going to get developed. What we're losing are the large undeveloped track for those, those groups of animals that need that large space. And the ability for those animals to cross over and migrate across those, those corridors. To allow those animals to exchange genetic stock and board and move across the valley as those chunks get developed. What's gonna happen is we're gonna lose corridors and migration paths.
Strategies that can be used to mitigate that? That allows certain development pattern, but still, still allows for the migration routes you're talking about?
There are, they're just really unpopular in the West, um, and pretty popular in other parts of the country. They call them conservation developments, so what they'll do is, uh, I, I'm sure some of you are aware of them. They'll take a three hundred acre parcel and they'll push all of the houses into one portion of it. Everybody will get a half acre. The rest of it, the rest of its own space.
So, but the, the, the problem in these areas, is it the fence line, is it the roads?
It's, it's the combination of.
Combination of fence line.
Population, the dogs, right, the kids, the hoes.
It's not the lives that rest, it's, it's, it's the folks moving in and the critters.
As an example, the, uh, McCarthy Lake Court, you know, something that's been talked about for decades. It's the closest point between the cell curves and the cabinets, right? There is a migration out there or not even migration, a transition route, it's just, it's there all the time. And there's been talk with the Booney Tribe, with the county, uh, to try to get some corridor preserved. And that's, that's fine, but, and I guess our question from the comprehensive plan standpoint is. Does it warrant trying to get, uh, less development density up against the, the state and federal land? So as far as not go five acres right up against them, but go over ten or twenties, does it, does, you know, would that make a difference?
If, yes, it would, and I don't know if. So we have, um, we have some folks working on taking camera and collar data. Contributing migration routes. Unfortunately, where we have classic migration routes in part of the state where mule deer herd A. Goes from just range here to this range here and back, and so it gives us this great looking heat map of. This is the area that kept, in North Idaho, we have vertical migrations of maybe a half a mile. For a lot of these herds because we've had so much space traditionally. And it's so dense that. I think up here, we have a little bit more leeway because of the density of the forest. You can have homes nearby elk and it doesn't impact them as much. Because you have that dense buffer of vegetation, whereas in salmon, the salmon area. You never see elk in neighborhoods, just whereas up here you do, uh, and the only thing I can think is. That's because of the density of the forest, they can just disappear.
I was gonna ask in, in, following my earlier question, given the kind of, uh, density that we have. Are there other strategies that are less extreme than the sort of conservation that you talked about? And, and I'm thinking it would be some mix of, you know, an area of five acre parcels. But for every area of five acre parcels, it's so big, you have to have an area of twenties or something that. That, that mitigates that, that sort of development density, and, and can those things be reasonably well established? It's, if that is helpful.
I think you could, I think another strategy would be in the actual planning of subdivisions. Rather than have your, your grid pattern of every five acres, there's a house. If you had a corridor through that. That didn't have the walls on it, that would be.
Or that were larger parcels maybe?
Or, or, yes, or larger parcels within some of the smaller parcels to where you had a area where animals could. Cross through that heavily developed area. That would be probably, uh, more palatable out here where everybody wants to have their five acre chunk of item. So, to mix in a more of a mixed development with some larger parcels that create a nice corridor through that. Versus just the grid pattern of just pack as many lots in as possible. That is going to be much more palatable in Idaho than a conservation effort.
Right, just, it's more like being a neighborhood, right?
Are we though, by putting the density there, can you actually hoping with these corridors, winter time, uh? The elk and moose and everybody else use the plowed road, right? They come into people's yards and eat their trees, their gardens, and so we're actually creating a false habitat.
You are, and that'll, so, I've actually changed some of the language in my letters lately to. Hey, you've got elk and deer in this area, they're going to become more and more of a problem until they disappear. And that's what's happening with these five acre areas, say you have a herd of thirty elk. Two years later, you're gonna have a herd of twenty elk, they're gonna be in people's gardens, they're gonna be in people's hay barns. Which puts pressure on us and our donation program, um, and eventually they'll, they'll disappear. Because they just need more open space, um, they're not good with roads, um, so. That, that's what's gonna happen with most of our valley, large conduits, bears, lions. You're gonna have a, a curve of, okay, you're gonna have more and more issues and then they'll just disappear off the landscape. But during that time of a lot of issues, you guys are gonna get calls, but most of it will fall upon, hey, I just bought. Five tons of hay and then two nights elk gated mall, which they do. It was pretty upset, especially with the price of hay.
So the herd in Sully Valley, the one herd that people hang out on currently, it's pretty much gone. See it anymore and that. Twenty years ago, it was thirty and now it's gonna be zero.
Where's the current range?
Pardon, the current range, where's that? Try to speak for me, that was the three hundred acre ranch that winter over, that's the one that.
Yeah, there's, there was a, a herd of elk on the prairie, the Raptor Prairie. And it's down to nineteen or twenty animals now, uh, you see him every once in a while.
So my point is, we haven't done a lot of five acre marks after, but the herd is.
And, and some of it's crossing highways, busy roads. And some of it's just a more open space.
If, um, you talked about the work you're doing with collars and camera traps and so forth. Is, is there some schedule when you're gonna reach a conclusion on that work and have a report available?
I sure hope so, um, so, what they, what they're doing is they're, they're pulling population information off that. And like, they're coming up with a, uh, developing a model to try to be able to. Get an idea of what our populations are without why, and. It's a very complicated model, so hopefully, uh. In, in unit one, like I said, the stuff north of, uh, the pondera system, I, I have better. Data on, at least color data on some wildlife movements right now, but as far as, uh, maps or. Anything more than just a population estimate, it might be a couple of years.
So what, what it comes is, you know.
Uh, it's everything north of the pondera river and then, uh, the Canadian word? Yeah, it's, it's huge, yeah, so. Yep, Sully Valley is uniform, okay.
But you don't have any statistics on that question? About the three hundred acre tract.
No, and so, I guess another problem with caller stuff is that. We don't put it out by a property just as we don't have access, it's mostly stuff that's on the forest.
When you say caller, is that, is that, is that a microchip?
It's a, it's a GPS collar. We actually put in, which involves helicopters and rocket nets and it's not something people want to have done, that's right. Um, but after the caller's on, those animals do go on private property, be able to get. Four GPS locations a day, so you get like, a ton of data, um, and then it has to be. Sorted through and put in the map, so. I can probably, um, give some maps of what, I mean, I've got maps of. Just it's a moose or it's an elk and it's movements, but they just haven't combined everything to, to make a map of, okay. Here's the most important part, and if you get the most important part to one cow elk, which. In the grand scheme of things.
So they tracked that one, one track, same with that, one look and then that one.
But I, I, you know, we, we, our, here our biologists tell us, they tell us all the time, they don't kill it. In individuals, they don't pollinate, so. Yeah, that's, that's, so, based on our own population, right?
So what, what is your, what is the population occurring species? Large animals, right, is it going down, what, they're saying?
So elk is, is actually pretty flatlined right now. Um, and they were going up for a while, right now they're kind of just. With, with our harvest data, we, we had some pretty good season, but elk herd kind of flatline. Um, the whole western United States is worried about this right now. Um, that's one of the reasons why a few years back, we got rid of all of our cattle's permits, um, in the state. Because for some reason, new populations in every western state. Well. They're all here, and, yeah, living in Pocatello or Sandpoint, you would think they're everywhere, but. They're, they're, they're doing, pretty much every state has a, a disease, uh, study going on right now. But, uh, nobody's really sure what it is, so. That, that's the easiest ways to slow down population decline is to take female harvests away, and the state did that a couple of years ago. So we're, we're studying that, our, our harvest rates on the moose has remained the same. But it's also because we really, really just tag them.
That's the other part, there's so many environmental factors that deal with the population, the on, the on.
That's the other part, there's so many environmental factors that deal with the population, the on and it's. It is so hard to differentiate and set it up and say, you know, here's what land you should do. Forest Service on the relocation of Iber ninety-five. Elk and bounty counted back twenty years ago, and that was critical winter habitat for whitetail. Whether the alignment was supposed to go and did go, and that was one of the challenges that they had was. We can say that this is totally disrupting the winter habitat, but challenge came on. How much, because it was, that was the beginning of wasting disease time, so there's a lot of confusion about what's going on with. The population. Disruption by road or is it disease or competition? Or introduction of wolves and.
One of those cumulative impact.
Yeah.
I I was gonna ask her, I was gonna ask about the wolves as opposed to or in addition to development, what is the. Have you guys determined what impact the introduction of the wolves has had?
Has had on moose, moose. You know, wolves do, wolves were hard on moose at first, um, but. Looking at the declines across the west in the states that have uh wolves and don't have wolves. They're seeing the same amount of decline. Uh, so I don't think that the wolves have as big an impact. Once we, especially once we started hunting wolves. Uh, and really, right now in North Idaho, there is not anything else we can do to help people kill wolves. We pulled out every stop, we allowed night travel, night airplanes, and we still have the same amount of wolves. But we also have about forty-five percent of the entire state's harvest of wolves. So our hunters and trappers are doing a pretty good job.
When you say western states are losing moose, what states are you referring to?
Utah, Colorado, Nevada, um, I believe in our community, Montana, Washington, Oregon. Everybody that has uh sheers. Only about half of those states have wolves, Wyoming.
That is that happening in B C and Alberta too? Cause that was, that was a big question on ninety-five study, well. The whole thing like the car, they just go in Canada and escape, well, real snow, but maybe. You talk about elk and moose, what about deer, deer stable, I would guess maybe it's some.
Whitetails uh are habitat generalists, so they're one of those species that habitat. Uh, fragmentation actually can be helpful to them. They'll live in a neighborhood, they'll live in a desert, they'll live at the top of the mountain, they're living in a safe rush, you know. They don't really get. Don't worry too much about whitetail, mule deer, because of the size of our whitetail population, they're. St- stuck more in the higher elevations, um, and we've. Lately, we cut back some of our mule deer opportunity more, uh, not because there was population declines. There was a a hundred complaints about the quality of mule deer, the size of the box. But we have mule deer, where we have mule deer, they're not expanding, they're also not.
That's strange here, so we've got some critical.
Yeah, and so. I guess my biggest issue with with streams lately has has been. I haven't figured out what the percent increase is, but I'm guessing. It's somewhere along the line, probably a two hundred percent increase in water rights that I'm trying to deal with. And that's. My biggest worry with. The water right now is water right requests coming in, part of part of that is because the adjudications here. And folks that have maybe had a pump in the river forever, wanna make sure they. Keep that there, so that's part of it, but also just rebound water use going way up. And so. That's that's, I guess, my biggest focus on water. Now, we do have bull trout and. There, most of the places we have bull trout though, are in areas where most of the stream is on the forest. Uh, because it doesn't take much to warm up the water, too much to bull trout streaming. And they're gone, they may have very low tolerance for water. So, um, I, you know, Lake Ponderay is probably one of the last. Really good strongholds for bull trout in the northwest, uh, probably one of the stronger populations there anywhere. And we're not so worried about bull trout, uh, except for some shoreline development. And impacts to their spawning streams. Uh, the Idaho club. Whether or not that, what happens with that one is is huge for us. So.
Tressel Creek, you're right.
Yes, Tressel Creek has more bull trout beds than any other stream in the country.
So as if, but you guys are keeping a pretty good eye on what's going on.
Uh, I I'm also a little worried about Pat River. There's been a few water rights that we protested on that, um. And it is a major migration forward work to a lot of spawning areas for cutthroat. Bull trout, coqueting, and which are rainbow, which support the fishery and.
So we've got more Pat River.
More Pat River has not, it's got a, so a lower pack river has a minimum flow water right, it's held by Idaho Water Resources Board. Um, and then those minimal flow water rights, they change, uh. During irrigation's season, they're quite a bit lower than. Other parts of the year, so like there's two different uh cubic feet per second rates. The pack river has like usually. About thirty percent of that minimum flow rate. Uh, at the end of the irrigation season. And. I I found this really interesting, but even though it's a minimum flow rate, doesn't mean that's the least about. In the in the stream, it's just, it's basically a suggestion and something that we should keep our eye on, so. I'm trying to figure out what. What is impacting that other than water rights, because there's not a lot of water rights on it, and it's just. We've had dry years, this year I'm not too worried about any water issues right now.
I think the public use from uh Colburn, that Grouse Creek Bridge. Down to say, um, Pack River's floor, is that hurting? The history at all, having an impact on those people?
You know, I don't think that hurts it, I think most of the migration have different parts of the year and at night. So I think the recreation is not the issue. One of the things that I've been looking into is because the lower pack is, um, such a sandy bottom river. You can actually lower the water table. By having two wells within a certain distance of a river. And that's one possible cause.
So, so on that subject. We're trying to get somebody more resources to come over and talk about it and hydrogeology and all, but. Can I ask one one question? What is the minimum flow rate?
I don't know often. But if you go on to Idaho Water Resources, there's a whole list of minimum flow rights in the whole state. And North Idaho, we have the Boye. The North Fork, the Quarter Lane, St. Joe's, the Pacts. Uh, we've got quite a few. And then region two has a bunch, but we have a lot of those minimum flow rights are. Uh, and they give a whole list of the priority dates and the two flow, but. The ones, most of the ones that have a minimum flow rate also have a. Uh, a gauge of watch them in the summer time and they'll. And they drop them down below those rights, which.
Is that related to the survivability of the trout?
Yeah, it just, if if we keep that downward trend, at some point that migration corridor is gonna get cut off. And with lower flows, the associated thing of lower flow is higher temperatures, which becomes even for our summals.
And then along with that, to keep on that being. Effective land use, one of the biggest courses, shoreline setback. But trying to maintain native vegetation off trolleys or whatever, by distance. Those kind of things, which is something we're gonna have to tackle. Updating the the policy in that, right? Is tree cover on the shores of the stream, is that important for keeping the temperature down? It won't lower the temperature, but it keeps temperature from increasing, so getting too much solar.
That's one of the things we've been looking at, I'm sure some of you have heard about the. Pre-serve bypass concept of being what you can, one of the arguments gets against, just plant one trees. Take last water, put an umbrella, umbrella does cool it.
But that whole, the whole issue. It's not just Sully Valley, it's a couple of places in county where, where. It appears that the people who live in there who have had wells, they can, whatever they're saying, they're seeing lower elevations in their wells. And now this talk about back river and it's being the soil type and everything, it's it's not. First thing, river is going to affect the water cases there, it's certainly. So how, what's your thought about the best way to get a hold of that kind of information?
So there's actually quite a bit of research on that, uh, and. I've read quite a bit of it, uh, and. You can read the research and say, well, it's affecting this river, since they researched it, but until somebody comes and. Does research on the pack, right, you can't say one word together.
So there are general rules, some you could apply or?
It's it's soil type. I'm not a hydrologist or a geomorphologist, but soil types, a big one, I walked down the path. It is a decomposing gravel and sands. And that's one of the soil types that is affected by that, uh, and. I think during one of the hearings, um, I can't remember the water provider, the Sully Valley, said that they're. Spoke with them and.
Seems like, yeah, the the core commercial wells are seeing that a lot of that, the biggest problem is. I looked up on the water resource site to look for monitored wells, there's two. Cooley County must be a hundred and fifty other places down southeast, my goodness, everybody's got a well, it's being monitored. But, uh, that's water resource, gotta get something going down to monitor the situation.
But and and that's part of the problem is because, uh, North Idaho is tempering for us, we have this. Uh, these big pretty lakes and it rains here versus Southern Idaho's mostly desert. Nobody's ever really thought, uh, about. We want to have a water issue, uh, I got a water issue, there's too much of it.
This year, yeah.
But how about last year? Yeah, that's, so.
But it it, there is an equation there somewhere with use.
Right.
You can only poke so many hole, put so many straws in the dikes before the glass empties real quick, so.
Southern Idaho, they've they've known that water was spying on resource for a long time, and they, they treat it much differently. They have water masters for every water district, uh, it's very tightly controlled. You get your water turned off if you're using too much. They don't even require measuring devices up here.
Who gets those jobs?
Be the water master. Get some prestigious.
No water today, no water keeper.
Right, which is a pretty hard issue.
It is, it's pretty slick. What's fishing game's current position?
Our current position is we've taken a giant step back and we're trying to get. More public involvement, um, and we're waiting to see what happens with. Child eliminated, starting a stakeholder group. To discuss Priest River issues, not so much the bypass. We're gonna take that out of the equation, but just discuss Priest River and what its problems are and. How we can start to work on some of those problems, that was, uh, something that Senator Woodward. Actually wanted us to do and we're gonna continue to do, uh, so that's in the works right now. But as far as fishing game, uh, doing any more studies or anything, we're we're taking a step back. Don't want, we're not gonna spend that a lot of capital on it right now. Because it is such a. Intentious issue at the moment. I guess he just, he hasn't officially started yet, starts to tell, his name is Carson Watkins. He has, yeah, he he was the regional fisheries manager in the Pocatello region. Uh, yeah, he starts on ten. Carson Watkins.
So can we talk about the little critters and predatory birds?
I I mean, I. What do they say, we, uh. Something with Jack the role, Jack of all trades, master none, but so.
So how about our big bird?
So eagles. Eagles doing well, uh. We do not do a whole lot of monitoring in North Idaho, uh, except for on Vista. Monitors, Quarter Lane area, it's one of the things that's written in their birth license. On those halls down, and so they've been monitoring. Within a half mile of shoreline of Quarter Lane for years and years. Two years ago, uh, they. Were allowed by the Fish Wildlife Service to change their plans on monitor every three years. Because every, um, territory had eagles in it. And all of the breeding pairs that were there. Uh, had active nest sites, except for one or two, and they're at, they're finding more and more nest sites. So the eagle population, at least around Quarter Lane, has been increasing for years. Uh, and after the de-listing, uh, there's been just a lot less monitoring. Because eagle eagle pop populations were stable to increasing in the whole region, and then when they got de-listed. So they're moneying to monitor anyway, so, uh. We're not too concerned about our. Yeah, I don't, I don't know much about. I know that I hear. I don't know much about owl populations, we don't have a specialized.
We've had a few opportunities.
Uh, let's see, what's the other interface, oh coyote. Interfacing in the streets, we're getting a lot of complaints about that and what.
I know lately it's been bigger two-tier critters that people are playing about.
So the bear trap moving in, did they get the grizzly?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we, that's. Livestock. So I, I guess one of my questions is. What? What is your, your end goal for updating the wildlife map and? How can I help? We do have access to. Uh, Idaho Fish Wildlife Information System. And I can provide access to you guys to that.
Yeah, she is going upstairs for a minute. She there, she was.
I can. Lean on our biologist to get more color down. Whatever you guys need, I'm happy to help. So one, one of the things that we look at. By the way, the code is written, the comprehensive plan on a slope. And we mentioned, you know, westernly slope. Is there, so read it on slope, is it, is everything over fifteen percent or is everything over thirty percent? I mean, if to get, so that would help drive some of the decisions of, right, okay, this might be, if it gets to be about fifteen percent slope, we know that might be. Winter habitat, it's on the west face, let's. Think about that, okay? I will, because we do have some. Spots that. Are heavily used during the winter and I can just look at slopes on some of those, maybe there is.
Or you can pat down on a map, but that we should look at.
That would help help inform some of the decisions.
Or if there, I mean, you mentioned the, that whole base of there are other areas similar to that. Like that, you maybe could identify.
Okay.
Recognize if there's some sort of winter.
Uh, also, it's gonna be. Cover. So the thicker the cover on the winter range, the less useful it is for, for animals, because they don't want that cover actually causes the snow to. To pile up and it's makes a partner with that will be around those. The more open the slopes are, the better that.
So that's, that's winter range I was talking about up on for ninety-five degrees. Before a service, the reason they were, they were complaining to I T D about it was they had spent. Under a fifty thousand dollar doing tribe burns there to keep that down. That winter having that now, uh, brushing everything, certain kinds, the chocolate brush, they kept the, the risks that they didn't want. Because that's where all the, the, especially the moves and the wait till, that's what you.
So is that, do they, they tend to go above the tree line?
They do, but they come out during the day and kind of sun themselves. They like those open areas.
Areas that have been logged.
Yeah, just any openings, whether it's created by a fire, whether it's been locked.
So do they like the boundary then? They go into trees at night?
They'll go in the trees if they're, if they're bothered, but.
And then come out during the day.
If, if you don't bother her about during the winter, they will be out all the time. And so, sometimes during a storm, they're gonna wanna go into the trees, get out of the camp, but. Yeah, they like, they like to be in the open, the sun, you know? So some of that is, you said slope, it's got, it's open, it's not every tree, but. And it's west facing. So. And below thirty-five hundred feet. From there.
And does that also imply adjacent to one of their summer range areas? Um, or will they travel much?
They'll travel a little bit and that's something we're starting to get a handle on with color data is where they're traveling from. But a lot of it, rather than these long drawn out things is. It's more of a vertical migration, not so much.
They're staying in the neighborhoods.
They are. They, they don't move much.
They're browsing, you know where lunch is, right? Post-umulates, they seem to have patterns, just like people go there and see the trails. In the west, well, that's just where they go.
So in your opinion, that the county's critical wildlife map is basically needs to go in the wrong file.
That all of them?
And you need to start over.
Yeah. All right. Um, because. They like.
Puts you on the spot. You will help us.
Yeah, I'd be happy to help.
Write that down.
I'd like to help out as much as I can.
Because it's obviously had the long data. Guys, no idea if you can.
Probably, thank you. Yeah, I, I got some cars if you guys.
Yes, sir, you can leave some cars and.
And I, as we go through this, I'm sure there'll be other questions that we've been. Throwing your way just to get a quick answer or something, just to feed into the conversation.
Well, and I, I don't have all the answers, but I know where to find the answer, even though I don't have.
Well, if you don't get, there's no answer to it, fine. Then you need to know that as well. Please.
Spreading, is there a price? You been up, have any questions? So we'll. You know, we're gonna have a public hearing here pretty soon and this will be discussed again. You're out of the quarter lane.
So. So what is? Wayne Mark, she's still in the department?
He's retired.
He retired, took his airplane away. That was it. Yeah, that was, that was fun in the, fun to do, to track everything quickly.
Mm-hmm, yeah. We've had quite a bit of turnover in the, in the region and Chip was kind of the, the last one and now that he retired, I think. Our regional supervisor and every one of our regional managers. Have been, except, well, Andy Ducks. An I fourteen years, this position, especially. Yeah, we're. Got a relatively new group.
Institution knowledge.
Yeah. There you go, forty, forty-two or three years, he was, oh, he was long, so, yeah.
Too good, it's good.
They say.
It is, can be, thoughts, new phase, new training.
But knowing areas.
Yeah.
I don't know if he's going anywhere, so. Oh, he's gonna have the berries, so. Because Wayne, Wayne left the area, didn't he go over the mountain?
He, he, he's back every once in a while and if you wanna find him, you gotta go to Saint Joe.
Very helpful.
Sir, you will thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We can drive carefully home.
Yeah. Take a piece of pizza if you want. If you are hard to back, you go up that door. He's, he's escaped. Thanks again, Josh.
Thank you. Okay, it's, uh. Five. Maybe five twenty-nine. I'm gonna move on to our workshop. And our last presenter is Josh with two elements.
Chairman, did I interrupt from?
Yeah, there has the floor. Yes, sir.
So I apologize to all of you for the last meeting, for me blowing my top. That was inappropriate. Thought I was doing okay after taking ten days of vacation, but. So, okay, I'll do everything I can to not have that happen.
I didn't notice you blew your top.
Oh.
I'm the one who told you I don't hear this shit. Takes a lot more than for me to think you blew your top.
Okay. I didn't do your blue sky, I decided it was reading normal self, reading engineer. Well, you don't channel as a background engineer, you play the records and tapes.
Electronics.
Josh, ready to go?
Sure, pull it up, let's, let's read through it. So I had, I had gone through a bunch of thoughts, issues and problems as I saw, you know, in. From sitting in a planning department for a couple of years and, and so. I don't know that I got them all, some of them I may have double covered as we read through them and they want to. Go through a little bit. But.
So, so are all these new?
No.
Or is it a mix of, mix of, or is this what we have today?
This is all existing.
This is what we have today.
Are you proposing changes, Jeff?
Um, yeah, some of the ones that I've worked on today at all, or, or that I have ready for today. Not seeing them in this document, it's the same.
I didn't get it done.
No, it was just, so I wonder.
Was it the one that's in the drive?
Yeah.
Well, we can. We can bring it up. It's the one that's on the agenda. It's. I think everybody can bring it up on the screen anyway. It's different, it's different from that.
Oh, probably. Oh, I thought we were on public.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Okay. So we're on public.
And that document that's in the driver's.
Oh, okay.
There we go. That's why it was.
Really looks different a lot.
Okay, well, never mind. Back to the screen. What are your suggestions?
Well, we put them all down, but so this isn't, this document's on the drive. Is this the same that's in the drive?
This is what is, these are the existing quality policies.
Okay, so then what I need is the ones that I, the notes that I went through and. Uh, so how do I go back from the drive and find those?
Can you read it to me if you have it?
Uh, sure.
Yeah.
You know, I've got it. I, I see it in mind, but if I just forward it to you.
Yeah.
This work document I've used. Is it now?
When I have this printed up.
This is, this was, this was, we're just.
That was a work. I just printed these right out.
Right.
Because sometimes I do better when I have something I can write on, but it doesn't match sense. Okay, well, like the goal, those. Even the goal doesn't. It's not the same wording. Public services facilities and utilities.
Yes.
Yeah, so which is long, that's new or is it sold, that's new? Yes, it is. The same as this. And what you're looking at, it seems the same as I'm looking at.
Well, no, I've got the, I've got the.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah. So, okay. Well, that'd be a good question. I think it's something, because these are. Yeah, these guys were. Reviewed by Commissioner. Microsoft.
I had not. At all.
Yeah.
Everybody on housing or utilities?
We're on utilities.
It's talking about the changes that have been made already.
Well, we're looking at here.
Yes.
Oh, we.
Oh, that's.
These are Josh's proposed changes right here.
I will.
That's why it says.
Okay, that's why it doesn't match.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. My question, why didn't you ask it?
So, uh, goal, future development shall provide adequate services. So, uh, future development shall provide adequate services and should not adversely impact services or utilities of the utility provider. I mean, some of the language in that was initially it said, impact services or utilities of the utility user. Uh, with the individual, which.
Present day user.
Yeah, but it doesn't make a lot of sense because. The provider who knows. Now I think about some of the sewer district issues and things that are going on, it's, it's up to that provider that sewer district or that water company to make those decisions, not, not the people that they supply. That was a change.
Sorry, keep going. Bonnie's just trying to put both documents up on the screen.
Yes.
At the same time.
So high maintenance.
Oh, here we go.
Um, so then objectives, ensure that.
So, so I, I mean, I have. The first part of that statement doesn't make sense. Because what it says is future development shall provide adequate services. Well, the development doesn't provide services. Right? The utility provider is providing services in the case of utilities. And, and the county, I guess, provides services in the case of things like roads, schools, EMS and fire, et cetera, et cetera.
I, I agree that it could be clear, but my thought process is that. Having built those developments that, and the roads need to be lined up, they need to be to a certain standard. The, the utility road easements need to be wide enough to allow for. Access to those utilities for future service or expansion. And yes, well, the utility provider. Is going to be servicing those. Most of the time, the individual in the development is the one installing. That sewer pipe, that water line, that's, that's fiber optic cable, whatever it is that's being extended as it, oh, it comes online.
So they're installing, they're installing it within the development, don't you want to? So they're installing, they're installing it within the development. Don't you want to clarify that there's adequate public resources out there to serve the development? I, I see what he's saying. And to me, it's more of a grammatical thing.
Yeah.
The future development doesn't, it needs to be.
I'll put the same future development approvals. Shall require.
Shall require. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, is that? Yeah, I'm good with that. I'm still thinking about the other. The second part, but I think that's, that's a good change that helps clarify.
I mean, I asked my wife, I am not a good communicator, so let's, let's work through, clarify the language.
I think.
So, so does that mean that, you know, I'm thinking how to practice, how, how does this work? You know, somebody wants to do a subdivision, we, we go to Northern Lights and say, hey, is this going to adversely impact your services? If this guy puts in 20 homes in this location or whatever.
Well, you could go to Old Water and say, hey, this guy wants to 20 ounces. Could you provide the water?
And they're going to say, no, we know that. I mean, today, they're going to say, no.
So then they wouldn't have. Or a cold.
You have to get a real server.
Well, but it's. But those utilities live and die on growth.
Yeah.
They need that new development in order to, to, it's like a pyramid scheme. They gotta have new blood. And so they're not going to say, no, they're going to say, get out your checkbook, because here's.
Well, unless they can. For instance, like a.
Sure.
Well, even Old Bay right now, they're saying, we don't have the wells. Or sewer.
Yeah.
It's water, well, water.
The conversation that I had with the water guy out there, because those guys are, are doing a mainline extension of North Cootin towards my house. And so I was in talking to them about buying a connection. And they said, yeah, sure, maybe next year, as soon as we extend this mainline. They said, yeah, I thought there was a limit on what could be done. Well, yeah, now. But once we've upgraded this pipe, we can, we can add more. So it wasn't necessarily that we need another straw on the lake, or it was that we've got too many people connected to small pipe. We've got low pressure. As soon as we increase the size of this mainline, then we can sell a whole bunch of connections up north too. And, and they're, they're excited to hear there's more people wanting to connect to help cover the expense of that mainline extension.
We have to remember for that water gift, that there was an irrigation design water district, and now it's evident.
No, I'm just trying to imagine, are there some, are there some unanticipated circumstances where a utility might say, that's an adverse impact. I don't know. That's what I'm, that's what I'm. Or even, I'd write, I, I understand your point completely. And yes, in general, they're gonna, if they can, they're gonna want to grow and serve their users because that's more revenue and that's, that's a bigger base to, to, to deal with future capital investments and so on. I get all that, but.
The utilities that are like, hey, listen, we need to do a facilities plan. We've got to figure out a way around it some money. We've got to fix some stuff. We're going to throw more story on this for a while while we sort this out. But, but please come back because we got to figure out a way to fix this.
Well, they'll figure out what they can do during that, but they have to.
They have.
They have to figure it out. So they're going to come forward with a cap improvement plan, a budget, a, a fee structure, who knows? You know, all that stuff to do. But they can say, I think, I think what you can, and they could come out and say, whoa, we just don't have the, the system capacity right now. So they're very delicately going to say that.
But I could see like Panhandle Health being like, hey, whoa, pump breaks because of the soil, because of the wetland, because of whatever factor, like.
I have a, I have a big issue with that specific subject, which we can talk about at some point, but.
Well.
And I could see them saying.
I don't think they do that at all.
Yeah.
They, they look at it one property at a time. Make sure the septic, the drain field is far enough away from all the wells, make sure the soil perks, make sure the system is big enough for the size of the home. Okay, we're good. They never look at, okay, we got a county here. And we got how many septic systems? And they're all going down eventually to the water table. Is there some limit to the number of septic systems that we can have to the density of septic systems? They are not looking at that at all, as far as I can tell. And I think that's a big issue because you definitely can overs tax, right? He does look at it. But nobody, I don't think.
Nobody now, but they.
Is county in that position?
No. Well, yes and no, because it was on the Cootie County, they had to do it. Well, yeah. So they did a full soil analysis to say, here's the type of soil, here's the drainage capability, here's the capacity, carrying capacity, and so on and so forth. Therefore, the answer was, you could only have this much development. Very. And that's where they ended up with that green bell down, the low point, very, because that's where it all rains. So that was, it was all set. And yes, it can be done. It's very extensive.
We had a study done in Sagal, I don't know, I remember 15, 20 years ago by a grad student who did it from part of Sagal along the 95, that same kind of a study. And he produced his own conclusions, but he was a grad student. He was a, you know, grad student project. It seemed to be very good. I mean, I. Seems like it was sterling.
Accepted.
Yeah. And, and, and we used it in the Sagal sub area.
Nice one. So my experience, you know, as a septic installer, who does it regularly, who has an advanced license, but an engineered system is out there with them all the time, my perspective is a little different. And I, I, I find them to be, I say lovely, somewhat of jack o' the thugs that are happy to, to spend more money and move the system and more studies and look at the soils and get engineer back out here. And, and so I have a great different point of view because I'm like, oh boy, here we go again. And because they're looking at all of those things. But I think the difference is, is that that, like, the local Panhandle Health is kind of like, you know, McDonald's, they're great at making food. They can make fries and hamburger. That's great. What you're talking about is the guys who look at the molecular and nutritional value of that food. You're looking for a deep, deep dive on the science of this stuff. And you're absolutely right. These guys aren't there. Don't do that. Don't have training. That's not what they do.
I'm looking for something like, something like what the grad student did, or something like what apparently they did down Rafferty Ferry when they realized they had an issue. Um, that gives us some guidance about the ultimate density of septic systems that we can tolerate without impacting the quality of the water. And that's the kind of conclusion that the grad students study gave. I don't, I haven't seen what they did down Rafferty Ferry. I've seen some, they said, they looked at soil characteristics and how fast is, how fast is it going to drain? So on and so forth. How long is it going to take before that gets down to the water table? What hap- what happens to, to it chemically over that period of time, given the soil types and so forth? I know there's people who do that kind of stuff. I don't think, I, I probably agree with you, but I don't think the people who maybe will help seem to have that expertise.
It's just not what they're, they're day to day.
Well, they're, they're looking at a, they're looking at a whole more development at.
They maybe have some that are pretty individual, but that's not what they're charging.
They're charging.
They probably could. And that's like, yeah.
Bringing it back to.
So, okay.
I mean, the goal.
So. You want to grab one and then we'll grab back over here. Well, inspected, we're at two and a half acres, right?
Um.
Suburbans. Other counties are at one acre. All you need is 100 feet separation from any early field to your.
To everybody's.
Yeah. Everybody's. It takes 24 hours for a gallon of water to be put through the soil. So supposedly, by the time that water moves 100 feet, gets to your well, should be clean. Unless, unless you're in solid sand or, or loose sand, then it takes 10 minutes. We are, whatever, so who knows? So you got to deny it. But for David's, you know, question, and so we took all the possibility of lots in the county outside of the sewer. That's an under way. Right? It looks good when it happens, but. Well, are you looking for just septic only?
Well, there, there's a dense, there's a density limit. Um, that's going to vary. I suspect from one place, I'm not an expert on this stuff, so, but I suspect from one area of the county to another, based on the soil type that's found. Unless, unless it's more uniform than I think it is. There's going to be a density of septic systems limit above which time what will happen is over a long period of time. And, and I'm talking 15, 20 years perhaps, you're going to end up polluting your water table. And once you do that, there's no backing out of it. I mean, at that point in time, everybody's wells polluted and they're going to have to do something about it. And, and the view we took when I was on the Sagal Sub Area Committee is we wanted to avoid that. We wanted to keep the density of septic systems below of the limit where there was any risk, even over a relatively long period of time that we ever got to that point where we had too many nitrites in the water. And I, and yeah, in that area, given those soil conditions that existed in that part of Sagal, and that was only part of Sagal, right? It was basically 95 or a few miles south of Long Bridge. Um, I think we said. It's what I think is a big one. So, so what I see said.
And this, this section is public services and facilities, so it doesn't really deal with.
I know we got off on a tangent, but.
I, I, I disagree with this. When I think utilities, especially in Bonner County, we're going to have to address wells. They're going to have to address either an individual septic or a community each field of some size. And, and there is going to be numerous short blocks, full subdivisions that are going to have a community well of some kind or shared leach field. And so this is right in line. There just isn't enough you know, water districts or sewer districts to support the number of acres that are out there.
I guess the question, what, what we ought to talk about, if you don't want to put it here because this is about public utilities, where else would we address it? In which other section? I'm, I'm okay if they probably want to put it somewhere else, but we could talk about natural resources.
It's, it's under natural resources. Yeah, natural resources. So the, and the questionnaire is, all right, you know, we we need to talk with some expert or experts about the subject to get better informed about it, what things are available for testing, what does it mean? So at that point, we can do that.
So. Is that goal?
Yeah, we're off the tangent. We're back to the program.
Welcome back. Okay, objectives, ensure that utility policies do not unconstitutionally violate property rights. Uh, sorry, violate private property rights.
Right.
We have a whole section of property rights.
Okay.
I don't think we need to say that everywhere.
And it's an awkward sentence.
There are, there are going to be utility easements. Except those in the Constitution.
So. Their base.
Yeah, it is adequately covered in the component on. Of.
The, the perspective I had on that was individuals coming in as new growth was happening, didn't understand, um, that there were these utilities, where in some cases, the new development thought there was utilities, and it wasn't utilities. There was leak, there was a lot of leakable issues around that kind of stuff. So that was the.
Well, it may be, I don't know, I have to go back and look at what we said there, but it may be that you could say something that's a little bit more specific thing about utilities in the property rights section. I don't know. But I would, I would rather see us collect all that stuff up and put it in one place. Where we're talking about property rights. I think we'll make the document normally.
So you want me to pull that out or you?
Editing it.
Okay. Then I won't touch it. Okay, uh, Bar County intends for new development to offset capital costs, expanding services to its area by requiring developer, the developer to provide infrastructure, facilities, the financial support for services generated by proposed. Which.
That's, that looks like a bit from the old one.
Pretty large.
And, and the county certainly is, they're moving in that direction. Things like the north side impact, these don't have done with coming up and says.
Yeah. When you say new development, it's a, a certain number of homes or whatever that that one apply to, or that's not just an individual house.
No, that's a thought that I rested with because most development, I'm putting in, she can do this and that. They were going to have to put in five lots and buy residential homes for.
Well, the impact fees for north side of where it's done, it's any new building. That's probably. And it was a different for residents versus utility structures.
So also, remember that, just the offline language.
Yep.
If, if you set this up properly, it'll go right into code, code section that'll then put all the guts and teeth and everything else. So that's our chore here is make sure this is broad enough so that encompasses all that stuff between included in a code. So I think.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it did.
Can, so. So next one, uh, new development should not unduly overburden the current system. What's this? You know, maybe we quantify whatever that is, whether it's sewer water.
Well.
Public services, facilities, or utilities.
That's what, for example, you know, in that Old Bay example I gave you, the number of connections they allowed to that line lowered the pressure that was available. They overburdened it and now they've got to upsize that mine. But.
So even, so. So, okay, so here's the statement. Let's go a little bit toward the code and what the code say. If, if your proposal overburdens something, you either correct it for the utility or you get a whatever. I just want to say the, the M word.
Wouldn't that be utilities?
Well, they have to tell us. They have to tell us. And they come back and say, whoa, no, we can't, we can't take another five connections.
Isn't, isn't that really encompassed though, this one? About it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's. Yeah, so, so I could take that one out. Yeah, so. I'm pretty good. Um, new development should be adequately served by fire protection, roads, sewer, school, law enforcement, ambulance emergency services, water and other public and private services. Well, it's almost another.
Well, let's see. So you said public, private in this section, this, this component is public services.
Well, I think there are two different thoughts, really. They are, they're very closely related, but.
But different.
They're different. One is saying they have to be adequately served in those dimensions. New development has to be adequately served. And the other one says, in cases where expansion is required, because expansion may, may not be required in all cases, right? But in cases where expansion is required, the county intends that the cost of, of those expansions will be borne by the developer. Well, so they're closely related, but I think they're two different, and I think they're both necessary and I think they're both important. I mean, we have a lot of cases down in Hooten Valley where, Spirit Lake area where there's always questions that we get from the fire chiefs about.
Yeah.
Well, we have good enough roads into that development.
Dual points of interest.
Right. That would fall into that objective.
How about putting that objective at the top of this, because it really is the key.
Right.
Then if it needs to be expanded, they shall be. If they, you know, we can have that priority array or whatever. I don't know that this is absolute, but it seems to be better if it's. If that one, if the the new development statement is first and then the Bonner County statement is.
I, I agree. That's the order in which we would be considering, kind of, right? They have to have adequate services and, and then if they don't, we intend for the developer to. We intend for the developer to. How if we handle that privatized, I guess, I mean, when somebody comes along and says, no, I'm not having any of those. I mean, even though they have plans, but they say today. I can't tolerate any.
I'm doing well and then we'll.
Hook up later.
Hook up later and.
Yeah.
Have redundancy. Yeah.
Yeah, so. Around the Golden Transport Station, we'll talk about this bit quick. It's water's supposed to keep contaminated. No Coburn water is offered at the new home sites. All together are growing up. And so how do you get the water treated or through water quality? Is up to them. But that's how they're perceived.
Maybe as a background question. So if you reside, if your property is in within a water sewer district, water or sewer district. Are any of the districts in the county, you have to hook up? Or or you can't drill a well and put it in septic system? Is that within those districts?
Yeah, no, yeah. We're involved in.
And then you have to. Because that balance there for water quality, there's no doubt about it. There's some of these other ones, and I guess most of them are thinking about it, Garfield. They up there relate. Some of the other ones out along the river, that's what they're for.
Probably some of the cities.
Yeah, I think the cities do, but we're.
We could drill a well. Yeah. You gotta destroy any septic.
So is that ready in like season hours?
No, I think it's just water.
It's a taxing.
Okay, so. Uh last one, full urban services and provisions for continued operation and maintenance of system shall be provided for. Urban and suburban densities. If you got services. Whoever's providing those services are gonna require that they, and and what does, yeah, as I said, you know, what's full? Okay, what's full and there's half or quarter?
Well, we had, remember the one one file we had earlier and and the term was urban like services. It's in the code. So. Yeah, and there was no definition by urban like. So that was kind of the struggle.
Yes, I don't, I mean, full, full urban, in my mind, it's like a Sandpoint sewer and a Sandpoint water. Yeah, that in my mind is is full. And then the minute that you are. In a smaller scale, whether that's. No shared water system.
Is it the Southside Water Sewer over in Sago? Is that, that would not make that.
Land application.
Yeah, see, that's kind of a hybrid, because they do have, they're certainly a mass area. It's like the way they're handling it is secondary. Technology.
Oh, that's right. And UPA is all over them all the time, but it's secondary. You're talking about tertiary. Which is what the city's down in Dover have those tertiary. And and I. If I've got anything to say about it myself. Urban development should be in the urban areas. So let's not even. You know, let's not even put it in there implying a a possibility. That's where I would go.
There's several other places where we've said requires.
Right, we get down to the. What is the one acre and the one, two acre, two and a half acre is supposed to have some urban services, also implying a septic or sewer system. Yeah. So, you know, we're pumping against urbanization. You know, this 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 objective. Deals with the cost of continued operation. Right, if you've got a sewer industry or water sewer, water industry. They're gonna make sure you're trying to continue the operation. That's.
Well, but it also says that services have to be provided. It's not just about operation maintenance. Fuller, take the take the provisions for continued operation and maintenance out of the sentence for a moment. It says full urban services. Shall be provided for urban and suburban.
Which, oh, that's 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 a repeat of.
It's a it's a density related.
Isn't that already in the definition? Of urban somewhere else that we talked about?
Well, one of the questions I then I think maybe. I don't know that we have any or. Right in the rural parts of the county, so I hope we don't.
Well, yeah, some of those sewer districts that are around Priest Lake.
I was wondering if that's where you're thinking about it. Garfield Bay, when you call Garfield Bay or.
It's not yet defined. As board services, they have a lot of time. That falls within one of those zones. Old Town, outside of Old Town is a number of small lots there.
Yeah, there's a few. Right, they are. And and that's part of the discussion. It should be the ACIs.
I I think, I think. Get rid of the word full. Is where what's going to start.
So instead of saying, what do urban services could we say exactly what we mean?
So we have urban services.
Yes. Yeah, it's your water.
Well, do I have urban services to say is it both?
Full urban services would would say both, right? You're saying urban services, it could just be assured or or shared water, you know, shared water, um just something like. No, it's single.
So again, but we do not have urban densities. So I think it's supposed to get a suburb. densities under the code. We allow. We allow ten thousand square foot lots with urban services. So it's really suburban.
Right, it's like twelve thousand.
You look at any of the cities, they go down to forty-five hundred.
One's a quarter. Right, yeah.
Somebody, please refresh me, because I remember when we were looking at that one file down south on ninety-five, didn't we kind of get? Caught up in what urban services was? Is this somewhere that we should be addressing that part clearly or am I putting?
We need to change the code.
Okay, okay, never mind. I'm just remembering it with a snafu when I don't.
We need to get rid of urban life and we need to define it.
And there's no. Yes.
Well, so should we be use, oh, get rid of urban like, but oh, you just had it. Okay, so the problem in that one was the urban. Okay, okay, all right, thanks.
So.
Urban services.
Urban services. We take out continued operation maintenance. And again, that's.
It's not really on the county.
Yeah, it's not on the county. It's not on the developer. Not whatever district it is that's running. And those things do have. Sago Valley Estates, they put in a common drain field. Septic tanks and distribution collection system. Their drain field and their reserve area fail. Well, Priest Lake has at least four services. Yeah. And but they're in operation and they're. Capable of leaving a charge for the maintenance.
But that couple of them are nasty.
Yeah.
And so we have, that's, that's, that's a service issue.
Right.
So are we on the operation? Again, that's up to them.
So we're getting rid of full urban.
She did.
Do you want to say anything here about commercial or industrial areas?
Previous writers.
E- even though the word urban starts a sentence, which is correct, because it's defined in the plan, but. We don't have urban densities. Might, you know, like weird to have not have it there, but. Technically speaking, all we have is so. So, yeah.
I I agree with that. I think we should take urban out for urban out, because I think. The places where we have ten thousand square foot lots, twelve thousand square foot lots, I think it's not. I just mean, but.
Well, and so you, it is because you go into any of our cities in the county and. Forty-five hundred square foot lots.
Do you want to add suburban densities and commercial areas? Also, here we go. I I don't like that at all. People tie it to industrials or commercial or rural services. And the reason I don't is because I've got, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of commercial. I got a half a gallon well and I got a twelve hundred gallon septic tank. It's because nobody lives there. So why does the zone dictate utilities and not the use? So that that's why I think tying it to martial or industrial, whatever. It's it's limits options.
Yeah. Cobra Industrial Park.
You could also use zoning to encourage the expansion of the servant services. So you have. Commercial and there's a demand for higher utility rate of that. And they're gonna, you can you can use that commercial zoning to encourage the the expansion of a sewer line or water.
This is the plan for those.
Yeah, so. So I agree that there are lots of. Certainly lots of commercial and maybe some, I guess, probably some industrial, because the way industrial is defined. If you're fabricating things, so it could be a small welding shop, but one guy who comes in and looks there, that's industrial. Technically, I think. But there's plentiful examples of those that could be timed, and it's the kind of situation you're talking about. But when the code allows that uniformly, then you also allow a big. Commercial operation.
She'll say something, but I think we need to. Say what we mean.
Or do we need to define some streamlined thing that's maybe less onerous if people think a CUP is too onerous? For the for the guy who has an operation like you're talking about, come in and say, hey, it's gonna be me and one employee and I just need a little bit of water in the bathroom. That's it. So it's really probably even less impact than most homes.
Yeah, and there's a bunch of those, you know, north on ninety-five that they all have their own well and.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that. The issue is how do you deal with this, with the cases where. A a bigger commercial use or a bigger industrial use.
You still have to. Maybe on those. You still have to go.
Right.
Handle their stuff and find what their stuff is.
All that stuff isn't going in a septic system anyway.
Right, right, but that's gonna be fine through that permit. I think the other things that take care of it that we go to is research. They're gonna.
So. If we go back to what we're talking about here, let's go back a little bit further. And if that's the push that we could go for industrial area in Sago. Then we should be having a conversation along sewer. Eagle about. Highway ninety-five push north. There are sewer trunk lines going in. On their their the two suburbs. I mean, that's part of playing, right? So I I mean, it's.
So I'm I'm I've had all those conversations. I've sat with Southside. We've participated in the Saturday meeting. We've had them here. We've had all those talks. And so when you say. I know the issues that we're up against. I I know what they're facing.
They mean Southside?
The Southside. And and so. In a perfect world, it would be great if they had capacity and. They can do that, but it's just.
Question that rolls around in my mind, though, is that a case where. I mean, certainly you can envision, oh, look, think over fifteen, twenty years and when ninety-five actually does get. Four lanes extended up in that area and with with front end roads. You could certainly see the growth in those kind of uses happening in that area.
Right, but it's way down the road.
Does that growth enable Southside to? Expand as well? And and what should we be doing now to? Kind of to what to Jake's earlier point to increase the probability of the right things happening so that does happen when you grow. I don't know. Maybe maybe we just, maybe there aren't things we can do.
It's it's a funny thing because. Because if, you know, like on Odin with this line extension and you being able to plug in. If somebody didn't. Create the parcel and create an option to drill a well in the septic there, I wouldn't be there. If I wasn't there, then I wouldn't need that mine. I wouldn't be able to plug in. And so it's. It needs to be an evolution somehow where there's. An option for this ten years and an option for that ten years and then however the line is there. And if there is line there, then there's this option. But. That's the tough part because on the other hand, but the growth doesn't go there. So.
I suppose I can.
So that that was. What we're talking about is he quotes again. Talking with providers, talking with the experts, but here talking about service providers. What do you see as your future? How do you see land use affecting your future policy of that? And then talk about that in text of the plan to set a stage for, therefore, here's a goal. That's going to work with the service providers and land development so that they are moving along together.
So so I I like all of that. My experience has been working with these means. Local, smaller sewer districts is that. You go in, you've got a president and a board, and then you have goals and objectives, and they're voting in that direction, making it up. And then there's a vote and there's a new president and there's some new board members and they were going right, but now they're going left. And. And there isn't. There, instead of a twenty year plan and they're on track and they're moving in that direction, they're just constantly zigging and zagging. And they're straight. It's a react to contact. We got a problem, we gotta solve it. We got this problem, we gotta solve it. And so while in a perfect world, which you're talking about. Fantastic. I just haven't seen it because of some of the political dynamics that are inside those smaller utilities.
So if you look at our largest employer in the county on Harley ninety-five, that most likely will be. encoded, right? We're not gonna count woods because they're off the highway in the back. Always encoder dealing with your water sewer issues. And we know that's a pretty good chunk of property.
Right.
We have, you know, lots of employees.
Yeah, so. My guess is that it's it's.
No, that's a.
No, they've got a drain field. They've got a decent drain field right there where they are. It's it's pretty gravelly. So they've got a decent drain field and an expansion area. They have done well. So their their size, the property is sized enough they can do that.
Right, and so if we said, hey, it has to be urban like utilities. Right, and so if we said, hey, it has to be urban light utilities, then those jobs wouldn't be there. Those incomes and those sounds wouldn't be getting fed because we said it's it's not urban, so it can't have. We just knows what. We've just cheated ourselves out of those jobs and and that. So I mean, that just to be clear, that's not my intent. My intent is to deal with them by exception and and I I think I could probably be convinced that. In that kind of case, that. And then the health will do an adequate job of ensuring that they do the right thing. But but why does the answer have to be no until you prove me and ask yes? Because otherwise the guy's gonna come along and abuse him. That's my concern. Somebody's here coming with a commercial installation. I mean, maybe maybe pain handle help will always catch it. The pain handle help will always make sure they have an adequate individual. Service system. But but that's what we're counting. Otherwise. As opposed to some review that says, okay, we understand the size, your nature of business, size of your business, how many employees? Yes, this is this is a low impact thing and certainly can be can be done on individual wells.
I mean, we're growing it. I mean, we're gonna grow and we're gonna grow down where there's no services, so.
So that's the thing that was rolling around in my head. And I under I appreciate what you're saying about your experience of working with these. It makes a lot of sense to me that that's the way that smaller operations would behave. But on the other hand. Would it would it be a problem if we had an objective that was something along our goal, whatever? Something along the lines of, you know, encouraging. The private. Sewer systems that exist to expand in areas where we anticipate growth or. Some just something like that. So it's sets up sets up. A reason to have an ongoing discussion with folks about where do you see growth happening? What are your guys' plans? And when I. When I was in the planning department, that was one of the things I was tasked with was, hey, we. We need more information. We need input. We we need to reach out. Let's get me. Let's sit down with these guys. Let's understand their problems, but. But it is. There wasn't a lot of time to that in this in recent years of COVID. Explosive numbers and of applications and things that there just hasn't been that time. Wouldn't always be like that. Oh, but but yes, that is what needs to happen. It's just low on priority displays and there's a welded information. I think just because it's hard doesn't mean, in my opinion, it doesn't.
We could get it so you could have that the easements in place for the public utilities for sewer and water.
Sure.
Not to tear up the street. They could go down to the sidewalks to know their.
Yeah, that'd be a good. So you could put in, you know, right language that says something like. I don't know, it's just, you know, leaving space in those utility corridors.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that's good. That's good. Just make adequate provision for them. Unless, you know, we're thinking through these things, but a lot of the things do belong in code. Not back here. Set it up. So it says adequate provision that covers all the water. So when you get there in a sub reading, you will have rights away adequately with so. Utilities down the side, down under the pavement and so forth. Can't put the hard twice in the ground because it doesn't work. You know, we did that with city and the fiber optic and.
Well, so are there changes anybody sees there? How do we how do we better expand some of those thoughts?
Adequate provisions would include all sorts of easements, utility and rest secrets. Urban services specifically means having those services in place where provisions is.
It's kind of say something about future utility utility. Expansion. It helps. I was also wondering, is 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 that area of signal seven that ACI? It is now saying not progress. Adamantly so on.
I just. In in terms of grammar, I don't like that that sentence has got for future and for commercial. Is there any way to clean that?
So eliminate the operation basis. Urban services shall be provided for suburban densities. So so it's. Right, but it's an objective of the county to to allow adequate easement. Access for those to expand. Why we say that? So. Adequate utilities.
For future, that that's broad enough where it could be. Easement, it can be. Yeah, a lot of things, but it's it's broad enough. I think it covers.
We have a lot of conversations about, hey, maybe the. You know, on some of these minimum easements for roads. Thirty's too tight. Maybe it should be fifty or sixty. And so if the county has to help on, hey, we we want to encourage it to be sixty. Because there's less likelihood that it would be a choke point somewhere in the system. These ones were all sixty for a while. But if you put a number in. So the adequate provision for now. I'm looking at it. How does this sign first of all? Shall we have a concern by other than that? And it says if you're if you aren't, then you better bear the cost. Now, down here, we're eating this specifically at commercial industrial other areas. Why doesn't this? Also applies to any. I I just know, you know, conversations with Lloyd Bridge. That that when we talked about, hey, where have we made it so that everything had to have a six and eight? I mean, they were they were ready to hand out laurels and hardy and shapes. They were like, that would be awesome. We would love that.
Yeah, you know, there's been attempts to. We revise to stay code where it said any prescribed by the ways fifty feet.
Yeah, sixty.
Oh, that would undo all my goodness. We sit here for a while.
So so you so you don't like the idea of a number?
No, I I think numbers.
So do you like the way that's written?
I do, except I'm wondering why. Is there a distinction between just development and then now we're getting down to commercial industrial?
Well, I think what we were trying, what we're where where this started is I. Sorry, I. Was it was about commercial, industrial or other areas where we might anticipate. Lots of higher density growth or develop. And 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 in my mind, I was thinking. The ninety five corridor and Sagle, which we already have a private sewer system there. And I anticipate that there's gonna be a lot of growth. Probably. Probably some residential growth and probably some commercial and maybe industrial growth. That's gonna happen over the next twenty years. So. And and what I was suggesting was that shouldn't we have some kind of objective? It's really, I I'm looking for. Something that prompts people over time to continue to have a dialogue with this. And there's probably other areas, but just to harp on that specific case, continue to have a dialogue with Southside. Sewer water and say, hey, this is what we see happening. What are you guys doing? This is what we see happening. What should we be doing? Make your life easier when some guy comes in and says he wants to put in some development on the new frontage road for ninety five, right?
Because they're gonna wanna go down the the frontage road.
The frontage road is where it's gonna happen, right? Yeah, it's gonna be on the frontage roads.
So now, so Dave, when you're when you're thinking is needed, is something that's gonna spur. County discussion with the utilities or not? I mean, is this a land use code or is it action?
So this it's in the objectives. So maybe an objective is shall shall see input from. Local utilities. About. Or for or Chelsea input or. Future expansion and growth. Which would say, hey, that's one of our objectives, to stay in touch with these guys, to understand where they're going. And it's true, but that's not.
Complan components, I have to deal with land use code or act. Action is approval of a permit.
Damn right. If they're going left, we want to know they're going left.
That's for the county to take care of. There's all these things. We're here the last week. All these things, all these things that that are great intent. But are not gonna lead to a code. They're they're good for the general actions of the county.
Okay, so then is that.
No, no. One thing we talked about a little bit was. There's a whole lot of things in the existing code, things that people want to see in the complan. That ought to be encapsulated and put in a side drawer to say. Hey, monitor county, here's stuff for the county to do. To keep track of the skill missions with the road, with everything else. They're not gonna end up directly telling a developer, you gotta do this. We're not gonna require developers to go see what the future plans are.
But it's just an objective. It's it's here's the direct, here's an indicated direction that we want to move in. But as it's written, it definitely can lead to actions, right? That, yeah, because you this this. Well, we could decide, for example. In that area of when somebody. Well, well, we could decide to. To put it in an easement for. Utilities along the furniture. We should we could require that, right?
So doesn't this doesn't that class bullet point kind of deal with it?
I think it does.
I think it does, too. I'm still troubled by the one above it. If you're gonna say urban, you're gonna say urban services shall be provided for suburban density, but I could see that. I would take out. The provisions for continued operation of the systems. I would take that out. Land development code or actions.
Right, but the district is not the district.
Well, true, but that. You take that out. So take out provisions.
All right, anybody want to move on to policies?
Tonight? Oh, nevermind. Yeah, because suggestion, sorry. In the last uh objective that we just studied, I didn't sort of say we are guaranteed also. And areas is an ambiguous word here because it's not defined in. In areas or in areas.
Being the devil's advocate. In the bad man that I have, I I could flip that, say, hey, this only applies to personal. So I don't have to play by your rules because I'm in a residential area. There's your thing says commercial.
Trying to see if it was covered in the.
Well, it says commercial industrial, this is similar non-residential uses.
So I actually I'm I. That's going away from my intent and with I keep coming back to the same example, sorry, but. I mean, I could see some high resident, high density residential development along ninety five. Yeah, I I I don't know if he's moving forward with it, but I talked with one gentleman who was contemplating putting in some apartments.
So just to get some clarity here, in that case, with that high residential developer next to. Highway ninety five. Would we be requiring urban services or will we be requiring provisions for urban services?
This this objective says provisions. You know, to me, it's about we we can. Maybe we don't all agree, but I think that's an area and there may be other areas. In the counties where we would identify a high likelihood for growth. To happen. And and we ought to be doing something to plan ahead for that is that's that's fundamentally what I'm.
So I should.
You go back to the goal. I think all this, we keep going over the same ground. Yeah, I think we've covered. No, I think I think it's covered, yeah. So we just. We're gonna get rid of that non-residential. I think it should say commercial, industrial or other similar uses, take out non-residential. And that and again, this is broad enough. It's gonna capture a lot of things that is up to the code, right, to specify. In a situation where.
Okay, so anybody interested in polls? Okay, uh, our account shall minimize public costs by requiring developers. Yeah, so. What do we leave that as a policy?
You know, I guess we're we're getting on up on all of where the objective of policy, but. It's about the same. At least twice. Actually, here here encourage. Yeah, our candidate may identify sewer and water service areas. And encourage all within that in the boundaries of those areas.
I like that.
Well, now. Say, you know what? This ought to be a sewer or water service.
Service areas.
Well, today. The presently it says will identify.
How about if we just said Bonner County? Shall encourage or should encourage development within the boundaries of existing.
Yeah, in their free time, they can just go. I'm gonna go look for some sewer services. Maybe identify a few.
All right, so I'm always stumbling in this word encouraged policies. It's comforting. It's the kind of thing I say to the kids. I care about you. You're important to me. And I want to encourage you. I mean, how does that play out? Uh, so, okay, theoretically, so somebody comes in. And they're adjacent to the boundary of a sewer. We're gonna encourage them. To go talk to the district, get annexed.
Yeah, that one says, why not? Why not? You don't want another subject that they can work the sewer district.
I'm just asking the question, see how it lays out. I guess.
To me, encourage. Goes just so far without required.
Yeah.
That's, that's the sense I get from that word.
So the staff, so somebody comes in the door, says, here I am, and the map shows you're right on the boundary. Who, who's he, what's his sewer district? No, you really ought to go talk to the chief.
I would encourage you to, but you can't require them, or you're not going to require them.
Because it's maybe out of their control.
So do we even need to have something in here that says we encourage?
It could be as simple as maybe, maybe the guy doesn't know.
Well, it could be, right.
He doesn't know, you can say, did you know that you're right next door?
Well, then we might as well say encourage and educate.
Oh, they do educate, I'm sure. And the maps and everything else, so, oh, I didn't know I was next to you.
Is there a reason to even have this sentence in here? Do we want planning encouraging developments within, I mean?
You also encourage developments within the boundaries of existing. Water and sewer, sewer areas through your zoning.
Yeah, and really, as I think about it, there's other places that say, hey, we wanna keep this.
So do you wanna get rid of this? Who's gonna be doing the encouraging?
No, if you have higher density zoning in these areas, that's encouraging more development to happen there versus somewhere else where you have lower density.
Say it again, well, that policy is not gonna end up in land use codes.
It could.
How?
By having higher density zoning in those areas versus other areas that don't have more, and so wherever you have lower density zoning.
A springboard.
It, it's like, here's, here's a more restricted path, here's it. Okay, so. Okay, so, uh, Bonner County shall support local volunteer fire associations and tax-supported volunteer.
No, we just skipped one, or did I fall asleep?
Normally ours is.
That's in our code. Our code says we will send out requests for review. I mean, it says it right there, it's just. You just change world to make.
Yeah.
Why, why isn't it real? I mean, we already did that.
It's in this, it's in the, as well, is there a problem with?
I mean, they don't always, they don't always give us. You know, wonderful input, I, I recognize that, but still, I think it's, it's important to ask.
It's just, as I've sat through, you know, zoning and planning and. Whether it's, it's the for or the against, they pull that out and it says, it says will, it says will.
Well, we'll, we'll ask, we'll see comment.
Yeah, so, not, we'll. Will, if, if they didn't submit something. And did they?
Oh, yeah, all that's saying is you're seeking the comment, you're not requiring.
Okay.
Request for review section code.
Does anybody like shall?
Shall seek.
It's the same thing.
I do.
Probably better be a shall, where it will.
Shall instead of will or will.
Will, so, sorry, Frank, if we, it doesn't say we have to have a change made a shall.
Shall seek comment.
I mean, I don't know how you fulfill your goal of saying new development's not gonna impact. Just the utilities, without saying, I'm gonna go ask the utilities if this new development is gonna impact you or not.
I agree.
And seeking comment does not say that it's required to give comment to move forward.
It doesn't have to be good comment.
Right.
Now, to be consistent with the way we reworked the. The goal shouldn't be talking about impacting utilities versus impacting the current users.
So. Yeah, I think that made that switch up here, but I didn't, I didn't down there and missed that one. I, up here at the top on the goal, this utility provider.
Right.
And down here, it's, um.
Well, it's the old language of the.
Yeah.
I would, I would guess that the reason it says current uses is so that. Again, another hookup is gonna be used for water pressure on the line.
But who manages that?
We don't have enough water pressure, one more, one more hookup is gonna hook it down to twenty-five PSI, which by, that's not acceptable for fire, blah, blah, blah. Then that's the reason to say, go build your well or put off your development. So it is, it's, it's not inoperative to have current users.
I just think it's more specific when you say the utility provider, because they're the ones that have control of that information and data. Not, not the user, Johnny homeowner, you have any idea?
Well, um, but. So the utility is gonna say. Your proposed development is going to affect current usage, because we don't have a quality.
So, so they're gonna, it's gonna be the provider.
So the provider, so it'd be logical to put the writer, right?
Alright, so let's. To be complete, what we're really talking about is without adversely impacting the utility providers' ability. Service to maintain service to current users, that's what we really.
That's the tax, there were Englishman life. So. So we are probably.
I think the ability of the utility provider. Yeah, the ability of the. Utility provider to serve. So then that, that kind of clearly sets out, this is what we're really asking the utility provider to tell us.
Yeah.
Can you take this additional hookup and still serve everybody else, or do we have to do something different?
Which then goes back up to the other one that says, if you overburn the system, you pay for the upgrade.
Right.
Okay, next. So Bonner County shall support volunteer fire associations and tax-supported volunteer fire departments, districts. Agencies shall be encouraged to operate under mutual aid.
Second part has nothing to do with that, just go, so.
Easy, easy, I think there's some good language in there.
But is it a? Is it a description of a desirable future situation? Cause that's what the state code would also tell us.
And supposed to be. It's not, it's not just.
Jack could go over to hazard serious statement.
Um, but I see, you know, I think. Utilities, you know, water lines or, or fire hydrants or something, I've known some of the commercial stuff with. With insurance and those things, proximity of those fire locations affects insurance and, and. What they will ensure will be, that we can build. The district survey area, very good, that's certainly. So.
What do you, what do you mean by shall support? Do you want, do you want them to give them more money? Do you want them to encourage? I mean, what, what shall support how? Well, that's not gonna have to judge, so what do you mean by shall support?
Uh, well, for example, we have Northside's impact fees and county is doing collection on those.
So. But that's not specific here to me that shall support, does that mean, oh, yeah, we want.
So that said, if, if it wasn't there, then it wouldn't say it's part of our policies that we want to partner more together on these, on these issues and problems.
Isn't that just, what you're describing there is, is just a convenience factor for collecting them. Instead of, well, then screw the fire department, let's take it.
Screw those guys, we don't.
Well, it's all.
Well, I just don't know what, what, what we want involvement from the county.
If that's, if that's involvement. I, I don't, what other involvement? What other support?
So they, they look at. They're gonna look at subdivision plots, they're gonna look at, and they're gonna sign off on some of that stuff, they're obviously impact fees. They have a lot of information about. You know, and what points they rest in the dust and some issues that are there, as you mentioned earlier. And so, I was just trying to win fans and influence people, but if you're low wolfing it over there, then let's go that direction.
Me?
I, I.
And it, I.
I'm just saying, why, why can't we work together with the fire department?
I don't mind working together with the fire department, when you say support, I start thinking that maybe you're gonna want the county to start. Paying more money, raising taxes to help.
They're all, they're all tax districts anyway. They'll, they'll decide what tax they need to like.
Listen, I'm, I'm not tied in this one, I, I am enjoying the argument, but I, if we wanna get rid of it.
Why are we, why are we? Why are we just, right, in our volunteer.
I just don't want the words shall support to be misinterpreted by either the county or the public.
Okay, so if we took out.
That's why I asked specifically. That's why I asked. That's why, no, I, I have more of a problem with support. Cause to me, support can be monetary support.
Cooperating.
Well, so, okay. So the fire district sends a comment back, this subdivision should have two access. That one right there would say, alright, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna require them to have two access.
Well, and to me, it can even be interpreted to say that Bonner County will provide those two access points, because Bonner County's gonna support them.
Well, hey, listen, I, I. Let's, let's make it softer.
I think what's needed is not to make it softer, but to make it more specific to what we're really trying to do. And. That's not clear in my mind, I mean, I think I know, but I don't know what the words are.
What, and, and if it is. I just, I know that we've had great success working with the local. The local fire. And there's kind of, you know, years of somewhat animosity, depending who the chief was and. Who was at the county and whatever, and, and, and the ability to reach out and work with those guys has led to.
Right.
But that's.
Great success, so how do we encourage that?
That's personnel issues, that's not land use.
Land use policy.
But it's a description of a desirable future situation, it's what the conplan is all about, it's in the state code. In desirable future situations in the state code, that's, that's what the conplan is supposed to do, among other things, describe desirable future situations in the county. Those words are in the state code.
Yep.
So.
Okay, at the risk of throwing another. Um, is there somewhere we could get rid of this and put fire districts back up in one of our other multiple lists of?
Sure, it could go other places.
Yeah, well.
Instead of having its own, to me, it seems like, why don't we give EMS their own?
So Brian was whispering in my ear, why don't we just talk about the different tax districts? Cause we have fire districts, we have either hospital districts.
Yeah, libraries.
Well, the truth is, is.
Well, maybe they would go.
I went down that, that fire hydrant utility of water line. And I think I may have gotten focused there, but as we've talked through some of these other issues and concerns, they're not really a utility or facility. Or a public service, I mean, yes, they provide a public service, but, but I think what we're talking about here is utilities, not. You know, fairgrounds are a bit of a public service, but that's not what they're talking about here. The public uses it, but. Uh, so maybe, maybe fires needs to come out.
I, I'm not fond of this sentence.
Maybe need to spin another one, but.
Or if you wanna list fire departments or fire districts somewhere else in one of our. Earlier sentences, but for this one to get its own sentence.
Does anybody see a reason to leave it?
Yeah, and I think. I'm not concerned about the county deciding that they need to fund the fire departments, the fire departments fund themselves, they're all tax districts.
So why have it in here?
Because we're gonna have to work together, because we do things.
They have to work with a lot of the taxing districts.
So let's, in, in this thing, I just wanted to. Encourage as one of the policies, continuing that working relationship.
Supporting the international fire.
Let's stay a while.
So what do we really, what do you, what's, what's your vision of what you really wanna see happen?
Like I said, I was thinking utilities and water lines, and I was thinking the experience with Northside. And the, the impacts and the county working with them to collect those fees, and I thought, hey. We should probably mention something like that, I'm sorry.
What, should we mention EMS and ambulance and?
Well, true, so at present. Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. In the Public Services component. Chapter six is fire station and firefighting equipment. Okay, so now, and I'm gonna go down further, see what it says about the service provided by that.
So, so then can we take it out, because we got it somewhere else?
I'm trying to see where else would it be.
So I maybe go where it's good.
You still have to look at housing?
Yeah. Anyway. We have to look and see if there's another.
So, so the next one is, the next one I've got is solid waste, this. As, as he, as a utility. But it's a service, the county's not gonna insure it.
And, and what do you mean by insure it, moving down the solid waste? You know, Alan and I have to drive. Eighteen miles to the dump, should we be insured that we don't have to do that? I don't know, I don't see.
You guys.
A lot of asters there, no.
So Bonner County solid ways.
Seven just Tamara for my house, and it's probably another four or five, they can. Down in Dick and She Road, and then it's another three miles down Dick and She.
County closed one.
How about Bonner County shall provide. Facilities for the responsible disposal, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Uh, but, but every, all of their sites. Are just a transfer, you know, picking it up.
But isn't that a facility for the responsible disposal of solid waste?
Yeah.
That's what it's for, right? Or you could either, if you wanted to make it a little bit stronger, you could say, provide adequate services, adequate facilities for the. Responsible disposal of solid waste. So that Debbie and Alan could go complain about credit.
Well, that's, that's, that's what I'm saying, what's adequate, that's, those are, those are words that are so open to what? What, what'd you say? Yeah, right, and I drive right by on the way here, but I. Exactly. Well, as long as we're supporting the fire department, let's use burn barrels, but I mean, I just, I just think when you say provide. I just think when you say provide adequate, that that opens it up so much interpretation, what's adequate? There's people in town who live, you know, who get. Curbside pickup who would be appalled if it were Alan.
Okay, so we took fire.
Well, I know, we look at it as an outing up there.
In the state code and sixty five oh eight, solid waste disposal sites is included in public services, so. So that's what. They look at the complaint.
I'm not hung up on adequate, if you wanna take adequate out, that's fine.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's a problem either.
Because it's gonna be different for everybody.
Yeah, yeah. I drive six miles.
Fine, whatever.
I drive two miles.
Whatever.
Well, they closed Dickenshe.
They're gonna have approved Dickenshe. Yeah, they closed eleven mile.
Yeah. Okay, so is it staying or going?
I think the victim should be there. I I'm not hung up on adequate, one way or the other.
I think it's fine. Contrary to.
That's fine, fine.
Put it there. Valid point, I get it.
Fine.
But but listen.
Define it, it's color. It's good here, and we can argue it.
Okay, so now moving on. Measures the mitigated moment, impact shall be. War by county surgeon. Let's get rid of that, cause we already talked about it forty seven times.
Right.
That's it, that's in the policy.
Yeah, goodbye.
Swatty.
She did it.
So fast.
The county is encouraged to provide expertise.
That's one that is just standing in there.
That's in there. I mean, all they can say is, we can't, we can't turn down a broadband tower.
Right, yeah, that's that's federal law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we. There's instances where we should. That's why we have the co-location requirement, co-locate on another tower. And don't tell me the reason you wanna co-locate in another, you won't co-locate on another towers because it's a bad business deal for you. Is there a technical reason why you can't be on that tower? Okay, fine, put a tower up.
It's a personal issue.
No, no, it's it's a it's a historical issue.
We heard the arguments.
Why do we have the co-location?
It's broadband coming out?
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright.
Okay.
Can I have a break?
No, no. Young lady worked very hard on this.
Others are sure. How they ensure that? How could that be?
Well, Don, there isn't.
Uh, okay, so housing, honor county recognizes. Uh, first housing needs are mandatory and will be addressed or. Will be addressed by. Provide adequate shelter for all regardless of age, physical ability, family size, lifestyle. And income levels.
Is that really the responsibility is?
No. Shelter?
Look, that's just in this context, that's just another word for housing.
But but it says that the needs will be addressed to provide. Didn't say we're giving out free houses. I mean. This was starting.
Housing needs are important.
Yeah. We would like to see. So let's take this over to title twelve or or the subdivision. How does it play out?
That was she reckon recognizes. Just by. By what? House, every zone. Have a single family residence. Or if you go on, if you want, ultimately. You request that and it's a condition. Is that all that's gonna come out of this? Very long, complicated. I don't know why. I've always wondered why it seems so. Gonna provide for all the world in that house, but.
I gotta be honest with you, I thought that if I wrote it longer and made use a lot of five dollar words, it'd be more impressed. I should have kept it simple. We we want back to the houses.
Go back to the. The uh.
Next one we brought up on.
Well, yeah, 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 I don't think we need the color. No, this this.
Swatty, can you just, is this the goal really to allow for the development of diverse range of?
Which I think is.
Full stop.
I think that's what the others. Doesn't work here. But. The example of that attitude is. We're trying to interview for a new director, two interviews. He's coming from different parts of the country to not afford to live. That is a problem. Where's he come? One was from the coast, the one was from over in Utah.
From the coast, we can't afford to live there. But is the county able to live here because of what this job pays or because of what costs?
Cause what we have, we don't have diverse housing here, we have expensive.
This is the county staff to provide affordable housing?
No, but we have failed to identify. In the seven years I've been here, an area where we can build self-help housing. Or small housing. For folks. We have no problems getting grants. Government grants to build. Apartments. The partners don't put people in the first time. Costs.
Isn't that really more a function for the cities though? Cause if you're gonna have a high density in an affordable uh setting. But that's gonna be within.
So we should be working with. Those cities in their ACIs that have the water to to provide those. Smaller lots. Smaller homes, smaller lots. First time buyers.
But what is the county's going? Why would the county? Well, just. If you're gonna, you're gonna.
We don't identify who it's, that's where I get it, you know, we've kicked this ball down the road here for seven years. And we still have not come up with small development. For first time buyers. Maybe it will never happen.
In the county.
I I don't disagree that the the sort of the primary responsibility, if you will, for that. And I use the responsibility word loosely here. Is gonna fall on cities, cause that's where it's more likely that you can have the higher than city solutions. But I don't, I think there is uh a need in the county as a whole. Uh, you know, we looked at, just to use one example. Six, eight months ago, we looked at a zone change request. From uh Hills Resort up in near neck of the woods. They needed to do a zone change across the street from their property, cause they had purchased the used property and they wanted to build some employee housing for their. Summertime employees. Um, I I think Schweitzer has similar problems. And we can say it's not the responsibility of the county to provide affordable housing, and the next thing you know, there won't be any restaurants in San Antonio. And they won't be able to hire people to work at Schweitzer, because those kind of people, those kind of jobs, those people can't afford to come and live here. So if we wanna have the kind of county that I know I wanna live in. We need to be able to provide for those people to be able to come and live here. And affordable is a bad word, cause it has too many preservative contexts, I don't like to use it, but I think we need some solutions. Yeah, we're close, I was.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, some of them are. Years ago, we discussed. Idea of planning developments with the idea of building potty chairs. Solely for the purpose of. Workers, people like that.
Especially the seasonal.
Yeah, it's almost like a tiny home. And so that, and we've got the mobile home parks, but those were really in a sense. Part of that kind of idea years ago.
Right.
Yeah. And I, I have to agree, I think the county, there's a lot of places that the county could be. Looking at those kind of situations, so it should be have something needed to.
If if I say that, then I, but I do agree, a lot of that is gonna have to. The solution is gonna come in the cities.
Well, you know. You you saw it at the hills, uh but. There's other employee housing that's that's been newly constructed. Like behind the ways and stuff, uh yeah, and they're doing even more. I thought that we're doing a lot, everybody, everybody up there is trying to do it. Yeah, cause they have city will be going. Or the other housing, so.
So so how?
I I don't know how you do this. How do you write that in and say? County needs to be supported. So you know, you got, to me, I'm looking at this sort of like more of a big picture. You've got this issue. Um, which is gonna be solved by increasing density. And then you have all of the other. Uh, concern about keeping Bonner County rural. So, you know, you've got all the subarea plans. That was the focus, all keep Bonner County rural, so now you've got to balance that with. Providing for density.
It was, but but and and I'm most familiar with the one I came from, obviously, but will we be allowed for some pretty high density in the ninety five corridor and say? Even though, and and I think in a way.
Define pretty high density.
Well, I think we went to, um. I don't remember how high we got, if you remember words, or how high density. Was it twelve thousand, twelve thousand square foot lots? So it's still not.
That's not, that's.
That's not. For the county, that's 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 high.
Yes, yeah, I mean, okay, I'll go back to millions, workforce housing, those are all uh. So that's very high.
Very.
Probably a triple what you're talking about.
Yeah. And personally, I would allow for that.
I would too, I would too.
Single committees. And I think it helps provide sort of a release valve that that takes some of the pressure off. The rural parts of city.
So wow, so how about if we do this, how about if we? If we say something to the effect that. That workforce housing or more affordable housing should be allowed in recreational, something like that, where it's. That's really kind of where it's needed. Right? In the cities and the recreational.
Well, close to the cities.
Why wouldn't it be allowed there now? What's the difference between? Looking over there.
You know, the big problem tends to happen when you talk about multi-family. Yeah, that's that's sort of.
It's a scary.
It's it's they kick it, it's it's the not my backyard. However. Down the road here. We have to pick a backyard. To build some smaller houses. It has to be done, whether the city does it or the county does it, it needs to be done, because. Building apartments just end up to being slums. And that's what we're doing. We look at everything that's coming, what's going on over here, Ridley Village. Go out by the airport there. Underage, renting out to apartments, but that's not putting people. Into a house.
How do you avoid, how do you avoid a tiny house community not becoming a slum? I mean, I just.
Because people will take an ownership into their own property.
Oh, no. No. No, they don't.
So if I go out north, cut the road and look at the self-help housing. Yeah, they have low carb, but a lot of those houses are big, dirty yards and everything else.
Come to my neighborhood.
Or you go to that.
They've got very tiny lots, they've got lots of houses, and there's several people who don't take care of their places at all. I think that, I think that's a gross assumption to say that if somebody owns their dwelling, they're gonna take care of it. And I, and I also think it's an overreach for the county to be involved in quote unquote affordable housing. You don't have affordable housing unless you have an affordable piece of land to put it on. Unless you have affordable materials to build it out of, unless you have a contractor who's willing to quote unquote build affordable housing. When they have the opportunity to make more money to build something else. I just think encouraging the county to get involved in what's considered affordable housing.
To help identify areas where you can do.
Well, we've, we've identified that in other places by talking about services and utilities and. You know, we're gonna say, oh, here's high density, and so now the the county is gonna get involved in installing another sewer district, because they designate something.
Some areas says. This is, this is what we have said that where we wanted to go. Comes back to the front line, the top line has the map that you guys. Brought up. And instead.
The Priest Lake Subcommittee didn't want any density.
Yeah, that's that's a thing too.
They didn't want anybody coming up.
Most all of these.
The health, that's what they did. Frustrating, very frustrating.
Most of the sub area committees in their plan, they also said. A lot only, a single family residence, no A U.
Right.
No full-time RVs. So, you know, that's undoing a lot of this, going against a lot of this. So I think we're all well aware of issues. And we could go around and merry-go-round for the next three hours.
Let's not.
But maybe we just need to get back to. Shortening up, taking out some of my five dollar words and making it cleaner. How about just the way it was? About this hurtful work there. Short and sweet.
We're just. I I don't, I don't like the word. Recognizes, that's that's not. A meaningful goal or objective.
Yeah, it's not, um, it's not an action.
I I think, I think, um. Well, I I go back to something again, like. Bonner County. Will enable opportunities for diverse housing needs and. Almost something that short.
Well.
And by enable, what I'm thinking about is that happens through your zoning decisions.
So there's a zone for this and a zone for that, right? So so that. And if the if the if it starts all like that, Bonner County recognized whatever, that's actually false. The goal would be. Ensure that affordable housing is.
Well, then I'm with Debbie, I don't think the county can ensure.
Well, okay, I'm just using the word.
So that's why I said enable opportunities, because opportunities come from zoning decisions.
Absolutely.
And then it's up to developers to build and. Local prices to get under control.
That would lead into the various zones. Or lot sizes. Something that somehow has been into. The goals here. Is this whole issue of more than just a single family home on a lot, a property, a parcel. There's nothing we we could squeeze out of existing housing goals and objectives that. Code where that allows for. I think, it's gotta be working. But it's really my mind is kind of stitching.
I have, no, I have a problem with that list of things. First of all, I'm I'm not sure. Adequate shelter for all, maybe, that's a goal. Um, I I don't like. For sure, cross off lifestyles.
Do we accept the word adequate?
I have more concerns of all, but I threw it back. Is it, but it's opportunities, right? So this is opportunities. First, I I mean, I almost would say put a period after diverse housing needs. And if we need to further define what we mean by diverse. You know, what we're really talking about is. Primarily, I would say some combinations of income and family sizes. I'm happy with just leaving that short.
That will help provide for lot sizes, it will also combine. Without saying so for the code to get into ADUs and that kind of stuff.
Right, I would interpret that. Okay, then that could be fleshed out in the policies and and.
Well. If if it's strong enough here to write a policy relative to ADUs. Full-time RVs. Yes, I think it it needs. Yeah, like now, all right, right now, I think we're. But that needs to be, could be stated here, policy. You know, that that, um, housing beyond the basic density. For your parcel size. Can be whatever. Okay, so you like this? Okay, four, okay, we're moving on to policies. Okay, so Bonner County shall strive to mitigate the negative effects of public policies that serve as barriers to affordable housing such as. Land use controls, tax policies, affecting land zoning ordinances, building codes, fees. Charges, growth limitations. Uh, policy and policies affecting the return on residential investment.
That sentence, that rambling sentence.
Bonner County, the public entity in the county will mitigate the negative effect of the public policy.
We're not laughing at you, Josh, we're laughing with you.
I certainly did not consider my audience.
It's a ruthless crowd. I don't like the word affordable.
Listen, let's pretend like, let's not go through your list of favorite words, is there just like, you're the first part that you like?
Why, why? Affordable should be in, affordable for who? And what was affordable today? Tomorrow might be astronaut.
So, all right. All right, moving on.
The federal government is probably gonna impose them here soon.
Yeah, that's why I don't. Go ahead and read the next one, Chad.
Encourage the development of a variety of housing options on lands of all types and terrains. Really like that word. It's, I think it's about as close to positive and I think it's like.
Types of lands of all types and terrains, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I.
In action, what do you think that would mean?
Um, I, I guess what I was thinking is that we don't find, say. Steepness that says, no, we decided that you can't go there because we think that it's too steep or too rocky or.
Well, we don't do that, what we do is if it's steep enough, you say you have to do some geographical analysis, which is probably reasonable.
Right, and so as a policy.
And we, and we, and we, to some extent, govern density based on steepness.
Yes, which is, but it's weird how you'll find even steeper stuff in rec zones as long as it's along the shoreline. But if it's up on a mountain, it's that steep, then no. So, I I guess I was just.
Yeah, I I I have, we had this discussion in the SAG committee, I, I'm a, I have this. Fire guys didn't agree with me, but I have this concern about high density in steep wooded terrain. Um, that's somewhat prone to wildfire, because I've seen it happen where on steep terrain. Things go up and. You get the wrong weather conditions and it's gone.
You have a friend who's building right by Iowa Club, up against a Department of Land site, he's at the top of the hill. There's no way, no way that a fire vehicle is gonna make it up to his house. Well, you may get to the front of that property and then you're running three hundred foot hoes. But, I mean, they would, they for sure save the foundation.
There's some houses that you're gonna save.
Same thing on the flat.
The old question, how far does water have to go?
But I, it seems to be the policy has been, hey, mitigate our liability as the county and and you can build. Show us the engineering, show us the design, show us the geotechnical, and you wanna plug into a cliff on, cliff wall, go ahead.
Well, there's a difference between that in my mind and encourage.
Just terrain include wellens.
Yeah.
Options on lands of all types and terrain, just encourage development, right?
Yeah, maybe that's. I think we're running.
I mean, that one, again, that's, that covers just the variety of housing, that covers, yes, a single family residential, it covers ADU, that's. Keep in there, lands of all types, terrains, I mean, that's, that's contrary to most of everything else we said. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I'm okay with the first part of this sentence, encourage development of a variety of housing options, period. And I, cause I think different housing options are gonna be better suited for one set of land and terrain conditions versus another set of. It's, it's almost, it's.
Why is the comp plan telling people where they can and can't build? I mean, you can build in a flood plain, but there's a standard you have to meet to build there. And and you can get a full permit from the Army Corps and build in the wetland. So there's a process, so as long as you go through the processes, why are we limiting? Where are people gonna build?
Well, and all those things could be addressed, just with the sentence like he just said, um. With the period after options, and what you just said is addressed.
I mean, I I guess part of what I was thinking is. Okay, I know that housing is an issue, there's a need. But if we start to lock down areas, we're, we're increasing the problem, not leaving the problem. Now, that doesn't make it cheaper, but.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, buil- building in a wetland, building in the flood zone, it's not gonna be a solution for.
I I like the encouraged development of a variety of housing options, period.
So that gives you an an in for looking at things like ADUs and.
Everything.
Okay, so, so back out terrains and types.
Options, period.
Options, good. All right, the dream is no more.
Read the next one. We can tear it.
Work with other municipalities and private parties to find solutions for all types of housing projects and developments. This is back to my, my, uh. Fire department is to encourage. So many times, I would see private landowners. Builders, developers walk into the county and they were met with. With, hey, help us understand what your needs are, help us to find a solution to some of these problems we've been discussing. And the planning department was like, we're busy, we don't have time for that, we, we're, we're overwhelmed, we're super busy, backed up. And so as, as a policy, encourage. Um, communication and working together, you know, one of the things that we worked on was city county meetings. Bring those entities together and talk about ACI, and so those are, so those were the thoughts as I put that together.
I take out other municipalities.
So this is directed, this is directed at county administration.
At HR.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. I mean, across the board, because there's, whether you're road bridge or you're, whatever, whatever silo of the county that you're in. This is, this is a good policy.
Where does that live?
So when it comes to developments.
And housing, the spin-off from the county. Either county commissioners or the planning department working with other agencies will then plug in. We found, here's what you can do. But that's, it's not gonna end up in code. The results of that kind of action, again, this is one of those things, a great idea, it needs to be in a separate box that says. County Administration Act II policies, uh, they're not. The three annual to the to Luca says, here's your components as they regard land use action.
Or a description of the desirable future situations.
Right, right, but.
Listen, I'm not tied to it, but is there some part of it?
Good policies. I don't, I don't really feel that the comprehensive.
I I it gone, it's my belief and my experience that, that there's no way we're gonna solve problems and promise that you don't work together.
Absolutely.
That's something that it.
It's, it's right there, it's the county administration policy, it's just like. The natural resource plan, that's a plan of Bonner County, it is not the land use component. That covers natural resources. It's Bonner County's policy, they worked it out, and Bonner County goes and talks with, with. BLM or service.
Okay, so we get rid of it? I'm wondering.
I'd say hold it there, and we're gonna collect a whole license thing that have that very monitor on it to say, whoa, it's a great idea.
So should, should we leave that and move to the past one?
Yeah, we just take now, I think that way it suggested we take out other.
I was just trying to.
Municipalities, supplies.
Is there something specific that we, well, and I don't know, maybe it's a bad subject, but. Uh, the, the, something specific we wanna say about ACIs. Individually, it seems to me, and I know there's gonna be some pushback in some areas, but it seems like the ACIs is. If, once you get beyond the point of most of the solution for more. Affordable housing is probably gonna be in the cities. Once you get beyond that, the next place I would tend to naturally look would be in the ACIs.
I I disagree. It's gonna be in the ACI, it's. I think we're seeing it in other cities, in other states, it's, it's, it's just the development, it's just. They're so pushing on the outside.
It's just, we had a project at the limits of Honorary City, and we went to Honorary City and said, hey, I think the right thing to do is put this in. Because it's in ACI. And they said, yeah, that'd be great, and then we went through and looked at the building, their impact fees and building and their inspections, the road standards and said. Oh, wait a second. So, I disagree with you, I think that, that your housing real well is gonna happen is on. On fives and tens, where you can have a main house, you can have an ADU, you can have two RVs, those RVs can be similar to that ADU. Now I got ten acres, I got four houses, one as big as I want, and three that are not bigger than nine hundred square feet. And that's where I'm not gonna be punishing the team to build a house, and I'm not gonna have to meet all of the standards, that's, that's where the opportunity is. To save money and do it less expensive. So. I.
So if, if we could, if if you look at that, okay, we're putting. Four houses on five acres.
Four dwellings.
Nine hundred square foot units for a portable house.
Five or more, okay, so up to five, what, four, four point ninety-five?
Even if you have like two acres in an armpit, so you'll still have one single family dwelling, one ADU and two RV dwelling units.
Okay, so.
If it is one acre or less, then it's one single family dwelling, one, two and one RV dwelling.
So that's where longer, where the part, the nitrates go up and everything else, it's gonna happen on the smaller acres. Where if we try to work with the cities to build in the ACIs, waters, water and sewer. We take the influence, we put it in the sewer plant, or not put it down in the ground.
Yeah.
That's why. I know Mr. Bowman's here, but North Cudney Road is a perfect example by that sewer plant. You know, or I understand in the backyard, just very, you know, but, but that's basically where. We can stuff a whole bunch of houses in ten or, in ten or twenty acres. And fill that need. But no one wants to identify.
So I, I appreciate what you said, but to me, the issue. The issue is pondered, and their owner is fees and requirements and so on and so forth, so I mean, they need to get on board. So.
And that could be that if we're working together and we're negotiating, hey, we wanna encourage growth here, what can you do to help incentivize people to go there? So they're not out on ten or twenty acres building four houses.
Right, right.
So again, I I have found, working in a county, the only solution is working together.
Of course.
Yeah.
Right.
But it doesn't necessarily.
Okay, so we wanna take, take this out. Yeah. Okay, can I move on to clustering? A lot of words in here you guys don't like. Clustering of housing in developments, just say on infrastructure and transportation costs. And shall be encouraged through. Uh, density bonuses.
Why, why do we have that as the only mechanism? Why, why can't we just end it after encourage? So maybe some other.
No, no, I think what Alan is saying, there could be other. Maybe, I don't know. You could say encouraged through mechanisms such as.
We have current code that that follows this kind of thinking, and if we would. Encourage that, help people say, okay, I cluster, there's density bonuses here, and I'm saving money. Yes, wants to move in that direction.
So.
But I have to agree, though, I think there's other avenues to look at besides density.
Yes, you can, you can still say density bonuses, but you can say other mechanisms. Yeah, so it's just like.
Or just shall be encouraged.
You could say through mechanisms such as density bonuses, so then it's an example, one of them, there could be others.
Yeah, okay.
A little bit of derail, do you, do you think that really is an opportunity to do lower cost housing?
I've done the math.
Could be, there's a disagreement about that in the SAG. For people who supposedly know the business.
I have an example. I'll take the Pepsi challenge of any guy, but if only we're split density bonus. I'll take the Pepsi challenge of anybody, but it only works with density bonuses, which is why I wrote it.
And we'll end with you. Let's finish first.
Okay, so the last one.
Group shelters, what do you, what do you, what's the definition for?
I get the reading.
We'll read it.
So Bonner County recognizes opportunity should be made for assisted living and group shelters. Because it is not just an urban housing function.
So that's, I take out because it's not. Get the rest of it. Yeah, I don't see that as, the end of that is kind of like.
It, it gets a little off. So if you have people with special needs. There's also one out on. There's several on the ground.
Yeah.
Down south. No, you don't like it, which word don't you like?
Every word of it I love.
Especially the group shelter. Looking for a service opportunity areas.
Are we done?
And that's it, that's all you got.
You're sorry. All right, you done Josh?
Yeah, that's why I.
Do you guys wanna take like a five minute break here and then we'll come back and we'll discuss what we're gonna do with the reviewing discussion? We'll have some time also on the nineteenth, we could split this tonight or whatever, so. Take the five minute stretch here.
And what are we coming back and talking about?
The agenda, the agenda and whether we're gonna finish this tonight.
Do we need to talk about this?
No. So it wasn't agenda lies. Pick back up on the ninth. Where do you have left? So we're back in service here, it's uh. Oh. Seven forty seven.
So there are still land use uh goals and objectives if you would like to look at that. In the next meeting, but.
It's up to the.
I didn't really hear what you said, so.
Uh, so the land use section goals and objectives are still to be reviewed. Is that something the commission would about want to look at? Now that all the other sections are being reviewed.
It was on the agenda for tonight too, because we didn't have Josh's presentation here, so that's where we lost all our. Cause you weren't here last week, take care of it.
But I had it, I had it civil.
It's okay, so stop snizzling.
I was worried maybe it was COVID, I didn't wanna get sick, was concerned about you.
I, I personally, I think land use is, is a big topic. And, and I'm not sure it makes sense for us to start that seven forty five or seven fifteen.
Yeah, we, I think we're having a scrap and said four or five times today.
Yeah. Yeah. That's just my. If people wanna stay, I'll stay. I, I think I'd rather we took that. From a fresh.
Able to devote some time to it, believe it or not, the wind has been taken out of my sails.
So.
I encourage you.
I would encourage you all.
So on the nineteenth, do we wanna start at four thirty?
Yeah, this is. So we get you home early. Want to encouraging on staff.
Trust me.
Well, the current, the current ones are virtually not existent.
Yeah, so those are policies on land use or not.
The current ones are virtually not existent. The current built and policies are virtually not existent. Yeah, and I don't, I don't think it should be, which leads me to ask a question.
Shouldn't somebody take it as homework?
Yeah, exactly, that's where it's going, yeah.
Well. And the fact is, is, as we've talked about for five years, as I have talked with every one of the sub committees or over that five year period. It sure seems like all these other components. We have, we're informed in eight day language. So therefore. We need to have in front of us. All the goals collectively shown, so that we can say how they conform. Cause that's what they're. What services do you have that are gonna affect land use?
Okay, so moving forward tonight is not over this.
Well, I could go quickly, cause you would do it without me.
Okay, so. Well, we, we don't have a speaker yet. Don has a speaker.
Well, no, but I need to inform.
So back to April, I talked with Allison Young, the Natural Resource Conservation Service at CDA. And I informed her what we're doing, she was extremely busy, she didn't get back to me until this. And she said two of the people, Sean Neal and Scott Mayer, who are soil scientists and, and they're very concerned. About what it says in the existing contract, soil wise, and have a lot of information and they'd like to come and talk with us. However, we're back to the same problem of time and when, so she suggested meeting on the morning of July eighteenth.
Yeah, to learn about soils. I mean, I do soils for a living, I can tell you.
How about it, can I make a suggestion, what if she was to just submit her concerns and write?
And we'll hold her on it.
Yeah, could she please do that?
Or could she zoom in? Let's have her see if she's zooming.
But I think she needs to be very concise on exactly what her concerns are. Who is this person?
Allison Young, Natural Resource Conservation Service. They're all about soils.
Cause they're the people who do the soil surveys now.
And they're out of, he's out of where?
Corollary in office for NRCS.
I think it would be interesting to ask about that app and when they're updated.
She is a resource soil, soil scientist. Uh, you know, the two gentlemen are in the same field and she would like to have. The three of them involved in such discussion, or whether I'll propose to her. Putting something together and sending first and also try and be in on a. Four thirty, five o'clock, just call.
Can we split screen zoom with a couple different speakers or is it?
It's for you to do by end of this, it would be nice to have one time.
Well, that was the thing, cause she said, I was thinking Monday morning, sure, who could be available to meet with her of them?
Well, I could be available on Zoom, but I don't wanna drive in two days in a row.
Well. I don't. I don't zoom very well. No, you, we could be, well, I'll be super good on it.
To answer to your question, I could be there Monday either way.
I mean, if a bunch of you could be here Monday morning and Alan and I could just zoom, zoom on Monday and then drive in on Tuesday. Or do you wanna drive in two days in a row?
Yes, I guess, I, I don't know what this question has to say. Uh, I'm sure I, I just mean a lot to say. About the soil survey, about how it's used, why it's used, what it does to you, the questions that we have about adequacy of soils, and what do we rely? It's every, every decisions, decisions based on soil, basically.
But I only have one question, is it natural or not?
Well, that's, that's. That's part of the question.
Yeah.
So right now, under natural resources, it talks about adequacy of soils to support land. Not a land, but she's, she done actually done uh.
So those analysis of different soils in county?
I don't know.
I, she is. And she hasn't, what's the point?
I don't know if she has, I didn't ask to make sure that. When I, I, I gave her this. He said, I didn't like, like what I read, I don't ever even know, I don't know, I just have to say that, but she said, I'm very concerned about this, I'd like you to come. It's not relevant to soils, so, okay, so she's done some analysis, she knows the soils. Uh, that's what NRCS does. So. And they're the ones that put out the Bonner County Soil Survey and all the surveys around the country. Alright, so we, we're gonna find out if she's available on Monday, eighteen. I will, I know you, that's when she wanted to be. So I can see her now, maybe David and I can be prepared on that Monday. And flush things out a little bit and then see if it precipitates. She was zoom calling the following. Alright, alright, so that's really, that'd be great. Alright, I'll, I'll get back with her. Tomorrow, David, you're available. Okay, so. Okay, so I gotta see if they appear. They did on Monday, it'd only be three of them.
Well, maybe it sounds like there might be four of us.
It goes on. Or it'd have to be a form for just three go and they don't have to advertise.
Well, it's just an agenda posted on the website, it's not even.
Okay, so.
Yeah, and especially if we're gonna use. We don't date public comments, those workshop lights may, so it's just letting the public know.
Let me work it out and I'll communicate to everybody.
You know, it's canceled.
Yeah, they're gonna go ahead and both. So we'll go this. Okay, so that's one, you can adjourn this group until the eighteen, in case four of us. And that could be canceled here and go to the nineteen.
And, and if we weren't, and if like we wanted to zoom in. Well, Alan and I have the internet capabilities.
Okay, so we got that one worked out, uh, there were two interviewees today for uh. Planning director, one was Greg Snow, the other one was Jeremy Green. Joshua. Your. Interviewed and did very well, I remember he was. Jacob did very well, although they decided not to interview Jacob, it's not a done deal. It's been talked about, they might advertise and what's more so human. Uh, one, one more thing, I, I have my notes, um, I was asked at the last meeting to look into the cost of having a consultant or some builder do some work for us. For instance, Bonner Ferry, city Bonner Ferry is updating their confidence. They have hired enough that the principal player there is Aaron Qualls, who was playing for the city example. He's been working since January on their update. Uh, I just got today, school to work and everything, they got a grant from uh Blue Cross. To do, they got a fifty thousand dollar grant, and then they kicked in, city kicked in twenty, so they're at seventy thousand dollar budget on that, but it's, it's a total rewrite of that. So that's agency, that's not what we're talking about, we need somebody to flush out an issue or look further into this. So it'd be. Costs, I don't know, cost could be anything that you come up with, pretty much.
Pretty sure we spent a little bit more.
But we haven't hired it, so.
That's right. But we have.
That's, that's the point of speaking.
You're talking like the time steps.
Five years.
Yeah. Yeah, I just think that. With everything, inflation, everything this year, asking for that kind of money, the account is gonna be a.
And it's.
But I, I can include it or I can bring it up during my budget meeting.
You know, it seems to be. Until you define the scope.
Yeah.
Of what you want. It's hard.
They're not gonna give you a blank.
First thing we need, if we, if we need some targeted help somewhere. Okay, let's define what that is, and then we can figure out what that might cost, I don't think we need.
No, well, one, one thing that obviously needs to be done is the democratic. So, all, all that, so, I don't know. Who gets the daily beat?
What, who gets the daily beat? What, who gets the daily meat? What's that?
Water county daily meat. Yeah, last week, there was an insert or an extra paper there called uh, resources section. And the paper staff did all that work for us. They like all of the demographic data, all the population data, as it is today, it's still two thousand nineteen data. The community survey for twenty twenty, because the twenty twenty census is still not out. So it's all there. I think we can use that document, it's all public information, we don't have to reference. I, I can get more copies of it to look at it to see if we could just bleed out of that. The information, I think it's pretty much all there, but they went into economics. To uh, schools and there, all the resources.
Where does they get them?
Yeah, where's that information? So it's all the places that they, they searched everywhere they could. They talked with labor, they talked with.
It's not from the census.
It's from Census Bureau. Guys, two thousand nineteen, most community survey, it's, there's various other things, it's, it's US Department of Labor, it's Idaho Department of Labor. Idaho Department of Farmers, uh, on and on, so it's all verifiable, good sources. So again, I think.
And a lot of you, they said, you said the twenty twenty census set is not out. How did they, uh, how did they? How did they redistribute, redo, how did they redo all the congressional business?
That's the first thing they did, they released all of that as they said. Released. Their normal sweep of data. It just happened. They've been doing all these real special runs.
I mean, twenty twenty would.
It's typical, we don't get their. Full bulk of information released to the public until two years after. They, they keep placing, oh, it'll be, it'll be June, it'll be by now, it's their saints, okay, there, right? And it's just, it's just a fact. Cause you can't go and say. Give me the population increase in large county in twenty twenty and now break it down to the census tracks.
But obviously, we want to be known as source of getting current.
I got, I got one more thing to say, if Don's done. As long as the interviewers were our two new county. Possibly elected communities. And come the first of the year, they're gonna be right in this with us. So that'll be interesting to see how that's gonna work out. They want us to get it right, they want us to rush through it. Renew, two new elect. Yes, looking at me. So we just. Wanna make sure we get it. They have some different ideas too. So. That came out of two days sitting.
So what is, so. We're not gonna do anything until January?
No, 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 we're gonna keep going through. Once we get done here with goals and policies, we go to a workshop. It goes to the, the, the sitting board county commissioners. That was our task. Then we're going back to work. On our files that are filing.
We have one file, three days.
That's true. So we'll, we'll keep powering through, but there's lots to do, obviously. They want us to get it right, and they want us to look at it.
But the current county commissioners, they could adopt it probably as.
They're not adopting the whole, they're just slipping their goals and.
He says before January.
Yeah. Well, they could do whatever they want, whether we're finished or not, I suppose.
No, they can't. They cannot, they cannot act upon the water county comprehensive plan until they have a recommendation from this.
Okay, so. Then. Goals and policies, we'll go upstairs with the recommendation without the rest of the document?
That's crazy. That's crazy, that's a lot of fun.
But that was, that was the task that we were given.
Okay, we give ourselves that task? No.
No, we were given the task.
They can't give us a task.
How do you figure they can't give us a task?
The code says, until elected officials get a recommendation from this board. They do not take any action on comprehensive plan. Therefore, you could, you could infer that they therefore can't tell us how to do it.
Well. You could. Can I infer that it's okay for me to go home?
Yeah, me too.
Alright, uh, we have to work, the planning director is gonna have to work the, uh, it's uh, eight oh five. Uh, meeting adjourned or continued through Monday, the eighteenth. Check the website on Friday for time.